To call the order, the July 22 board meeting. Hello, everyone. How's everyone doing? I move we approve the agenda. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So, we have some special recognitions this evening. And I will turn that over to Dr. Lewis.
Go the same way.
I like doc. I was gonna try to doubt a little bit. You want me to?
No, I want to come down here for this.
Okay.
This is special, so I wanted to come down here and do this. First of all, good evening to everyone. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
District annually recognizes an individual for exceptional leadership in service to public education with its Outstanding Citizen Award. Recipients of this award are business, university, and community partners who give of their time, talents, and resources to benefit our schools. And that was one of the things that I noticed coming in, that this community is full of people that supports its schools. This year's Outstanding Citizen Award recognizes Lois Orth Lopez. Loops. Loops. Stand here while I talk about you. Always better to talk about you in your face, right? So for those who may not know her, Lois is an educator. For 20 years, she served children with autism as a special education teacher, which is what I started, so she definitely, definitely near and dear to my heart, as a fellow special education teacher. And she also taught elementary music at Quarterly, Sunset Hill, and Quell Run Elementary Schools. A staunch advocate, a staunch advocate for the teaching profession, Lois served as president of the Lawrence Education Association and as the state vice president of the Kansas National Education Association. She is a member of LEA negotiations team, was a member of LEA negotiations team, co-chaired its evaluation committee, and served on the Quarterly Elementary Schools Equity Team and the Board's Elementary School Consolidation Working Group.
I'm thinking about some of these.
Yeah, I'm not done. Lois received the Mayor's Excellence in Education Award in 2004, the Lawrence Schools Foundation Elementary Educator of the Year Award in 2008, and the Lead Center's Impact Award for Distinguished Service to the Arts in 2014 and 15. Since retiring, I don't think she's retired, but since retiring, I'm just gonna read that. Since retiring from the Lawrence Public Schools in 2014, Lois has continued her strong advocacy for public education and support for our schools and the Lawrence community through her broad volunteerism. While I cannot list all of Lois' volunteer activities, we will be here all night, some of those closely associated with the mission of our school district include, but are not limited to, assisting our Human Resources Department with ensuring high-quality classroom instruction through our rigorous and consistent teacher evaluation process through her involvement in the Charlotte Danielson Training. So she's trained in Charlotte Danielson, which is a teacher evaluation tool, and she comes back and support our district by providing that training to our, to our beginning teachers. Co-chairing the Board's Equity Advisory Council, supporting the district's fine arts program, serving on the district's One Dream Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Committee. She also has served as Chair of the Douglas County Association of Retired School Personnel, a member of the Friends of the Lead Center, she's actually on the Board of Directors in the Education Committee, an officer with the Lawrence Chapter of the NAACP, and a member of the League of Women. This is just a small piece of what she's doing, right? Just to name a few of her many volunteer commitments. So Lois, on behalf of the school board, the administration, our 1,800 teachers and support staff, and nearly 12,000 students, I thank you for your continued service to our schools and to the community, and we want to present you with the 2018, 2018, here it is, 2018-19 Outstanding Citizenship Award for Exceptional Contributions to Public Education.
That's beautiful.
Congratulations.
Do I get to say anything? Wow. So I knew I was getting this, but I didn't know all the history was gonna come through. I obviously have loved teaching and really enjoy working in this community, and I love our students and our board, and I think this is a great way to spend a retirement. So, thank you very much for this. I don't know what else to say. I work with a lot of wonderful people, so.
They would.
Oh, they would.
We would.
Oh, they would.
I don't know if she can say she's retired, because she's spent an enormous amount of time, not only here, but out in the community, and just supporting this, this great community. So congratulations again, Lois. Our next award, Outstanding Service to Public Education. Lawrence Public Schools in 2003 created the Outstanding Service to Public Education Award to acknowledge community partners who offer exemplary leadership and support for improving student achievement and success. Previous recipients include veteran school board members, university leaders, and longtime volunteer, and major donors to the Lawrence Schools Foundation and Lawrence Education Achievement Partners. I'm super excited that this year we get to honor the contributions and leadership of Derek Kwan. For pom poms. Derek is the Executive Director of the Lead Center of Kansas, a Lawrence School Foundation Master Partner. While Derek joined the Lead Center in 2014, this year marks the 25th anniversary of the Lead Center's partnership with Lawrence Public Schools. And consequently, coincidentally, Lawrence Lead Center has, has been in existence 25 years, and so soon as they opened their doors, they began to partner with our school district. For those who may not be aware, the Lead Center offers school-only performances each year for all of our students pre-K through 12th grade. These performances introduce students to dance, theater, music, and storytelling. They also delve into timely topics of importance to student learning such as multiculturalism, anti-bullying, racial equity, and social justice themes. Our students and teachers benefit from the annual 3rd grade Theater Arts Day and Artisan Residence and Teacher Professional Development Programming. The Lead Center gives our students opportunities of a lifetime through internships, the invitation to perform in concert with some amazing professional artists, and the opportunity to audition and share their many talents on a world-class performing arts stage at the Lawrence Schools Foundation Annual Ovation Talent Show. And this is open to all of our middle and high school students. Also want to thank Derek and his staff for generously hosting our back-to-school convocations, our professional development workshops, state music festivals, all-city choir concert, college and career fairs, and even a few high school proms were held at the Lead Center. The Lead Center and Lawrence Public Schools partnership is one that benefits the entire school community. So Derek, on behalf of the board, our administration, our over 1,800 students, I'm sorry, teachers and support staff, and nearly 12,000 students, I thank you for your continued leadership and support of Lawrence Public Schools, as well as the Lead Center's 25-year partnership with our schools. I'd like to present you with this 2018 Outstanding Service to Public Education Award for your exceptional contributions to the teaching and learning and the arts education. And I will tell you that my first venture in the Lead Center was when I walked out on stage for our convocation to over 1,800 staff, and just the, what an amazing facility that we get to definitely call one of our partners. And so we're hugely excited about the work that you're continuing to do with our school district, but most importantly, the work that you do for our scholars. Thank you and congratulations, Derek.
Thank you, Senator. Sure, sure. Okay, thank you. Dr. Lewis, President Johnson, Vice President Jones, and members of the board, thank you so much for this recognition that is really, I'm just only accepting it on behalf of the Lead Center team, because as everyone knows, it's a, it's a team effort, absolutely a team effort. I'd like to acknowledge Deana Johnston, the Executive Director of the Lawrence Schools Foundation, as well as the board that's here, the board members that are here, for your amazing partnership in terms of what we can do for the, the young scholars that are, that are in USD 497. Last thing I want to say, my mom, she worked for 30 years as a secretary at elementary school growing up, so I, I absolutely understand and value the, the importance of public education. And, you know, on behalf of the Lead Center, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank Julie Boyle, who just rolled off of our Friends of the Lead Board, and also acknowledge Kevin Horell, who just came onto our board. So, thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. That leads right into the report of the President, and I just want to, again, extend my congratulations to both Lois and Derek. I've personally had, I can see the, the fruits of their labor. Lois taught all of my kids in elementary school, and they have also benefited from the Lead Center programs, and I just love how it provides exposure to all forms of art in, and some of our students probably wouldn't have been exposed to as many art forms as they have through this program, so thank you again. So, as I said, I don't have much to report on, but I wanted to kind of mention, last year around this time, maybe about two weeks, two weeks before, I was in Skyping in from Japan after chaperoning some of our scholars from USD 497, and now it's our turn to host. So if you are around town and you see some, see a lot of individuals, some taking pictures, we will have our Sister City program, we will have 15 Japanese delegates come from Hiratsuka, our sister city, you know, the brown signs that you see, and coming in, so you can make that relationship, that close relationship. And on Tuesday, we have a city day where we will take them around town, and they get to see the different sites downtown. Also, on Thursday, we've had the opportunity, we, we're calling it School Days, where I know there's a lot of buildings under construction, but they'll have the opportunity to visit the Peaslee Center, College and Career Center, and a middle school. So they, one of the things that, they have a project that they have to do as their summer homework, and, and you know, they want to learn what life is like in America, in Kansas. So we take them around, and even though there aren't any students, you know, like learning taking place within the classrooms, we have our, we call them jet streams, once they've traveled to Japan, they'll come and kind of share that and take them through a few places. So if you see them, you, you'll recognize them, trust me. You know, just say hello, and I just, again, that's another wonderful opportunity for us to build relationships, understand cultural differences, and share them, and the goal around that is, when you know more about someone, you don't have ill will towards them or false ju, false accusations, so you can't, you know, you don't want to fight someone, and, and once you learn about our differences and accept those differences. So, a lot of the times, they come in as friends of Hiratsuka, and then oftentimes leave out as extended family. So that's a great program, and maybe we'll get to have, have you meet some of them. And then, I know Dr. Lewis will probably touch on this, but I wanted to publicly express my condolences to the Harris-Jordan family and the LMCMS family on the loss of one of our scholars. Heard so many great things about, about this young man and the impact he's had on so many, so many people's lives, so wanted to express that. And at this time, we have a report from the Superintendent, Dr. Lewis.
Good evening again. I want to welcome Dylan, who's our new, not necessarily new, he's, he's been to our board meetings and run around town for, for a while, but he is now our official school district reporter. Many of you may be aware that McKenzie was our reporter, but she's called to other duties, and so we understand that Dylan covered others, and what was the other school district prior to? Manhattan, yeah. Okay, so yeah, he's, he's covered Manhattan School District, and so, welcome Dylan, we're excited to, to have you with us. Also want to welcome, we have this Senior Vice President for Enrollment Management, Student Affairs, and Student Success from Shipping Bird University in Pennsylvania, a good friend of mine, he's doing some work at, at KU, and he decided to come to a board meeting to see me, so Dr. Trust in the back, welcome. He's also one of the authors of the book, so I told you to bring your book. Yeah, and I too definitely want to publicly express our heartfelt sympathies to the families at Liberty Moore Central Middle School, the student Jayon Harris-Jordan, following his death on Thursday evening. Had an opportunity to speak with his mom probably about an hour ago to get some details on arrangements, and she's planning some other activities that we definitely want to support. And so, we also learned of the death last Wednesday of Michael Temerius. He's a, it was 2012 graduate of Lawrence High School. We share our sympathies with his family as well, including his mother Sherri, which is a veteran teacher of our district. Our thoughts and prayers are with both of these families. Want to invite school families to join us on August the 10th for the Second Annual Community Safety Fair from 9:00 a.m. to noon in South Park. We will join a variety of our other community partners to highlight the importance, important safety information, including a bicycle safety course, and information about students, our platform All Student Safe, which is our online reporting tool for bullying and other safety concerns. It's hard to believe, but it's here, school starts in three and a half weeks. And whenever you go into Target and Walmart, I mean, that stuff's been out for a while, and gosh, could they give us a couple more weeks to enjoy? But we're excited for, to welcome our students back in, in three and a half weeks. New teacher induction begins August the 1st. All board members are invited to join us at 7:30 the morning of August the 1st for our Welcome Breakfast that will be here at the district office. Teachers will return to their schools on August 8th for Building Professional Development. District Professional Development Day follows that on August the 9th. All of our certified and classified staff return for duty on August the 12th. Definitely, again, invite board members to join us for our back-to-school kickoff at 8:00 a.m. August the 12th at the Lead Center, we'll have our convocation. Students in grades kindergarten through 5th, 6th, and 10th will return on August the 14th with K-12 regular schedule to follow on August the 15th. And our pre-K program begins on August the 19th. And next, I would like to call Lori Folsom to the front. She's like, what? But I will tell you, coming in, wrapping up my first year, definitely want to make sure that we did a tremendous, tremendous job supporting our teachers, but we know that Lori Folsom, who is our LEA president, supports all of our teachers, and probably don't get the credit she deserves, but I just want to let you know that as Superintendent, you've made my first year very, very great. My very first meeting in this district was with Lori Folsom. My first lunch meeting was with Lori Folsom, and just wanted to publicly thank you for your partnership and continued support, and looking for, look forward to.
Lois knew you were going to say something.
Did she? But you didn't know. But I, yeah, definitely want to publicly thank you for your support and, and your continued support. And on behalf of our partners at Old Chicago Pizza, Jessica, our, one of the managers there, want to present you with Pizza for a Year.
Thank you.
That's all I have, and I also have a new best friend who'll be out for pizza.
Yeah, right.
Maybe we can schedule our next lunch meeting at Old Chicago.
Yes, I remember that. At this time, we'll have patron commentary. We have Tom Hedman first, and while Tom is coming. We have Tom Hedman first, and while Tom is coming up, I'm going to read the audience participation. The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes patron comments, and thank you for taking the time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions, however, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. While you are not required to share your contact information, you did, we ask for that information so the district staff or the board can follow up with any specific concerns you may have. I guess the board president will invite comments on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments related to agenda items are welcomed after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please try to limit your comments to five minutes, but we understand, have a little grace.
Hello?
Hello. I would like to be in by just taking the opportunity to say thank you all to you very much. My dad always said that there's people who take care of themselves, and there's people who can't take care of themselves, and there's people who take care of themselves and other people, and thanks for your volunteerism for our community. I am a teacher at West Middle School, but my most important job is raising my three kids, and they've had the pleasure of attending Sunset Hill Elementary for several years. Actually, this last year, all three of them were at Sunset Hill, and that was kind of amazing. I suppose it's the only time, I hope, for college sake anyway, that they'll all be together in one school. It's been a wonderful experience. I would say that one of the, the very only lower points of this experience has been the size of my son's class year after year. He's an incoming fifth grader, and I know that there's a cutoff number, that's important to have, you know, standards like that, but I, and I believe it's maybe two kids away from that cutoff number at this point, that's maybe what I heard. As a teacher, I can also say honestly that there is a difference in large class sizes. And, anyway, I just wanted to take a couple minutes to come up here and speak on behalf of all of those fifth graders at Sunset Hill that are not here, and I wanted to take the chance to say, please consider adding another teacher to their fifth grade class there. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Have Lori milk? Did I say that?
Milky.
Oh, I was going to add the E. Milky.
Thank you for, again, your service to the community, as Tom said, and also for giving us an opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Laura Milky, and I have a rising fifth grader at Sunset Hill Elementary School. And like Tom, I am concerned about the size of the classes in that grade. As I emailed the board last fall, and again this past spring, Sunset has been a wonderful school for my daughter and my son before her, with talented teachers and a supportive family community. Last year, however, the school's fourth grade was negatively affected by the enrollment policy that allows up to 30 students in a class. So, there were two sections, and they ranged between 28 and 30 students per section over the year. All other grades at Sunset Hill had sections ranging from 19 to 25 students. The physical classrooms were not large enough to accommodate 28 to 30 students. My daughter's teacher reported having to move tables when either of the two students in wheelchairs needed to cross the room. During my visits to the classroom, I witnessed a talented, committed teacher making things work, but only through tremendous creativity and patience. As of my most recent conversation with Principal Jeremy Phillip, who I believe is here tonight, the school has 58 enrolled in fifth grade for 2019-2020. This means class size will again start at 29. I understand the difficult situation the board faces as it budgets for 2019-20, and I know that the most important task right now is to find a way to better compensate the district's hardworking teachers. But I also believe that when a teacher-student ratio approaches 30, the student and teacher suffer, not to mention the inequity created by a wide variance in ratio both within and across the schools. So, I asked tonight that the board pursue a decrease in the maximum class size for the elementary schools, exploring all possible ways of making this happen within a tight budget situation. Is it possible to stretch the budget by greenlighting dual-grade classes or by hiring more paras? If this is not possible, how might schools better support teachers in classrooms stuffed to the gills? And what kinds of compensation, monetary or otherwise, might teachers with a consistently higher load receive? Those are just questions I wanted to pose. So, again, thank you for giving me a moment of your time to consider this matter.
Thank you.
Board commentary?
I have a couple things I wanted to share, let me just pull up my notes here. What I think all board members should have received, a newsletter from KASB recently talking about how KASB determines legislative policy positions for the upcoming legislative session. I just wanted to highlight that and note for board members and also for district staff that there, if there's any particular legislative issue that you would like to see addressed this session, share that with me or with staff at KASB so that we can start working that into the legislative committee discussions that are going to begin happening throughout the fall, culminating in adoption of legislative positions at the, at the Delegate Assembly for KASB before the beginning of the legislative session. So, really, this is an opportunity to share concerns or issues that you'd like for us to take up this coming year. I also wanted to note, make a note on something that's, that's received a lot of attention recently in the news, among parents, and also by the Kansas State Board of Education, which is the problem of vaping in our schools. There was a very thorough article in our local paper with input from some of our student interns at LMH that I really appreciated hearing, but also that made me very concerned about the prevalence of vaping within our schools and the degree to which it's not being addressed, even when it's happening in the classroom. So, there's a couple things that I wanted to ask of the board and board officers, which, one of which is that our board adopted last year, I believe, a letter of support for the Tobacco 21 Initiative. When it came before the board, we were supporting the community initiative to try to get the City Commission to adopt an ordinance to raise the age to purchase tobacco products in our community to 21. At the time that that was under consideration by the City of Lawrence, there was pending litigation in the City of Topeka over an ordinance that they had passed. That litigation has now been concluded, and it was found that the City of Topeka did have authority to pass their Tobacco 21 ordinance. So, I would like us to encourage the city to, the City Commission to reconsider adopting a Tobacco 21 ordinance for the City of Lawrence, and if, board officers, and Dr. Lois, if you think it's appropriate to send a request to the City Commission, either from the district or from the board, asking them to help us fight this problem in our schools by making it a little, even just a little bit harder for our students to access these products. I also wanted to ask that if we could have a board report or some information shared with the board soon about what efforts our high school staff will be taking this school year to address this problem, I think it would be very helpful. I've heard a lot of concerns from parents and also from students who are entering high school. I happen to have a child that age, so I am hearing from kids that, at that age, about their concerns and questions about this issue, and so I would like to have a better understanding to respond to those concerns about what efforts our staff will be taking. I also wanted to just note that State Board of Education member Anne Ma, she sends out a newsletter, and if you don't, if you don't get it, it's helpful, it kind of gives a brief overview of what the State Board is talking about, but she gave an update on the State Board of Education's e-cigarette and vaping task force, which they established earlier this year, and are, she says they are moving with great speed to tackle this epidemic, and their number one goal is to get education information to the schools and parents by the start of the school year. And then she notes a number of resources that are already available, that they're working on distributing information about to districts and other interested parties, including things about how, how the State Board can help develop more comprehensive smoking policies to include vaping, and what does that look like? I'm glad to say that we already include vaping products in our board policies. We've taken that step already. What can be done to keep these materials out of the hands of children? And I think that goes to the Tobacco 21 Initiative potentially. How can we support students and help students who are already addicted to the nicotine and these products, and what resources can we provide? How can we make information available to the community, and how can we train our school personnel to effectively address this problem? So, I hope that the State Board of Education information will be helpful to us in our efforts as well. The last thing I wanted to do was just give a quick shout out to the robotics team from our high school. They did a Team Steam Camp a couple of weeks ago, and my rising sixth grader participated in that camp, and he said to me, it's the best camp he's ever been to, ever. And I was very, very impressed by the students who ran the camp and also by the staff who worked with them, and I just wanted to thank them for providing such a great experience for our middle school students. Thanks.
I just have a couple things I want to congratulate Lois again. I also benefited from having Lois teach my children music at Cordley, and my son, who just graduated from Lawrence High and is headed to K-State for vocal performance, I can say, certainly found his love of music with you in those halls of Cordley. So, thank you so much for being such a great teacher and a great advocate for the arts. And then the other thing, just real quickly, is a reminder that tomorrow we will be meeting for our IBB with the Teachers Union here in this space from 4:00 to 8:00. I really would like for as many board members as can to please attend. We've met in our small groups, and we will be presenting each other with the various economic packages that we've come to and kind of talking through those, and I think it would be really helpful if you were there to hear that information for yourself, so hopefully you can make it. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead. Move on.
Okay. I want to congratulate Lois also. You had nothing to do with my kids. Everything I have heard is, kids, kid, everything I've heard has been great, and I've known you for a while since I ran for the board for the first time, and it's a really well-deserved honor, so congratulations. The issue of class size, this is something that we are really aware of. The budget is tough. I appreciate the fact that you offered some possible creative solutions to that, and I think we need to start to think a little bit more creatively about some of these issues. As a member of the Boundary Committee, I think that's one thing we have to talk about also, and, you know, boundary changes are never easy, but to the extent that we can balance things a little bit, that's, I don't think that's going to be helpful this coming year, but down the road, hopefully we can address some of those situations. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And last thing, and this is just really in the weeds, and I apologize, and this is really a question for the Superintendent. So, you know, we adopted last year concurrent classes with KU. We adopted 10 new ones, I think we have 12, and we had a discussion about whether those classes would be weighted the same way that AP classes are weighted in terms of the grades. My understanding is that we are going to do that, and I just wanted to confirm that that was in fact the case, or if it's not the case, then, you know, maybe we could talk about that.
Yeah, we had discussions at our most recent Executive Leadership Team meeting about waiting concurrent enrollment classes. I definitely appreciate the research that you've done, and we definitely don't see why they shouldn't be, shouldn't be waited, and so we're having those conversations about how to, to make that happen. So, yes.
So, it is going to happen?
Yes.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Well.
So, I now have two things based on that question. This is going to be fun. So, last week I had an opportunity to go on my second tour of Lawrence High this summer. Dr. Johnson got a tour, and she was able to bring some students who work for the budget for the paper at Lawrence High with her, and so I got to walk around with some students and see the progress that has been made, what, Shannon, in the last two weeks? When did we go? Two weeks ago, the first time?
Right before the 4th of July.
So, about three and a half weeks or so, and it's astounding the progress that they're, that they're, that they're making. So, so that was, that was interesting, and then for, for any board members who would like to go or go see it, you can either let me know or let Shannon know, and we can, we can work to arrange that. It's kind of fun to walk around with a hard hat and a yellow vest, it's, it's cool. You can even borrow mine, I have it in my truck, because I haven't bothered to give it back yet. And then my second question, based on the question that Rick asked, is, it's something I had asked you, I don't know, a while ago. With that discussion of weighted classes, has there been any discussion on modifying how we calculate GPA with the fact that a 90% counts the same to a GPA as a 99%, because they're both calculated as an A, as opposed to an A minus versus an A versus that?
Yeah, we're currently looking at that, that calculation. We currently don't have a grading procedure manual that things like that should, should go in, and so we're working on putting something like that in writing.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. So, we'll, we'll make a motion soon to approve the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the Superintendent requests that an item be removed. The item or items removed are voted on separately.
Motion, motion to... I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second?
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Venture?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Yeah. Okay. So, we have new business to discuss. We have one item up for, under new business with the possible action to follow regarding the immigration, immigration resolution. So, to give a little bit of background knowledge, a few years ago, we issued a memorandum regarding immigration and customs enforcement, which was the following. Lawrence Public Schools are committed to ensuring safe and supportive learning environments for all students. Unless presented with a criminal warrant, our schools will not be providing access to U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement. But due to the recent activities in our community, we felt it was time to revisit the topic, and although this isn't policy, we do have some policies that are related to the resolution that is, that we will discuss shortly, and I'd like it if either Shannon or Kelly would speak a little bit about it from the Policy Committee standpoint, and then we'll like to hear from other board members as well.
So, we do have at least two policies that I wanted to touch on that relate to interactions of law enforcement with students and others in our buildings. The first one is JCAC, which is our policy on interrogation and investigations, and it does require that students will not be, you know, taken into custody or detained on school premises in the absence of a warrant by, by an appropriate, appropriately issued warrant. So, it's, I think we are, we will be, or have, or already have sent out some information to our building principals just to remind them of what our district policy already says about actions like that, and what, what they should do should law enforcement personnel arrive at their buildings. In addition to that, we have a policy, JRB, which is, which has to do with release of student records, and that comes into play because it basically says that we have to have either a legitimate educational interest or a warrant or some other legal ruling, you know, requiring us to turn over records in a circumstance where someone requesting them doesn't have an educational purpose for it that's spelled out in our policy. And so, again, that's another area where, where we are, you know, by policy and also by law, bound to protect student information and family information and their privacy. So, just wanted to highlight those two, Kelly.
Yeah, those were the two that I was thinking of talking about too, just in terms of thinking about FERPA, but also thinking about the requirements we have federally just to provide an education for the students that come into our door.
Absolutely.
And the purpose of bringing... And the purpose of bringing, part of what Melissa was speaking to, but just to kind of reiterate the purpose of bringing forward the resolution is to, in part, reassure students and their families that enforcement actions within our schools are highly unlikely. So, our intention would be to provide, if we just make a decision to move and pass this resolution, but to provide it in multiple languages to families. And then just to communicate with district staff, particularly leadership, that our intention is our schools reflect that we are living within a city that has declared itself a welcoming city. And that our buildings, including, you know, through the adoption of this resolution, can go a long ways toward assuring that we are in a community where we are trying to provide education, where there is less fear and strength is in the unity of our ability to open our doors and create a welcome environment.
And I think I want to jump back onto one of the things that Kelly just mentioned. You know, I don't know that everybody who's here has actually read this resolution. So, when she was referring to our federal obligations, you know, we have, there's a Supreme Court case, Playa La Vida, that has said that public schools have an obligation to educate all children regardless of their immigration status. And so we feel it's very important to reassure our families that we take that obligation seriously and that we are going to do the best that we can to ensure that all of the children that come through our doors receive an education.
And I can say, just speaking from just my tiny window into this issue, that I worked with families as a social worker where there is a family that, I told them I was going to mention this. There was a family I worked with in a city outside of Lawrence where the grandparent was the primary provider of care to the child. And following the, what's been happening nationally, this particular family had a lot of fear about letting their student go to school. And how do they protect them while they're in those buildings? And I want to communicate to Lawrence Public Schools and families that we want them there, and we want to provide their education, and we don't want to interfere with their ability to succeed.
So, I'll just say, you know, when we first started to talk about this, when we asked the question and asked for feedback, personally, I was conflicted about this. From the standpoint of, I don't have a problem with the resolution, I don't have a problem with what it says. I was conflicted by what the purpose of it was, what the need for it was. Because if you tear it down, it's basically saying that we're going to follow existing policy. And so that's kind of where I was. I certainly was not going to vote no, but I was conflicted. And then, and the reason why I'm speaking tonight is because I have to give props to my seventeen-year-old daughter, who will be eighteen in like a week and a half, who, we were having a conversation, and when she stopped laughing at me, she brought up the exact same two points that Kelly just brought up as to why this resolution wasn't important. And so, based on that conversation, it really changed my thought process about why it's necessary to do it.
Anyone else?
I'm supportive. For all the reasons that have been mentioned.
And I think Kelly's gonna read the resolution for those who haven't had the opportunity to.
Madam President, I move the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education Unified School District Number 497 Douglas County, Kansas, is a duly organized Board of Education functioning as a Kansas municipality. And whereas the Board is aware of recent decisions made at the federal level regarding immigration. And whereas the Board is an entity, objects to the immigration and customs enforcement, making an attempt to utilize public schools to interview students or otherwise gather information on potentially undocumented students and family. And whereas the U.S. Supreme Court has held that all children, including those who are undocumented, have the right to attend public schools. And whereas schools are prohibited from inquiring about the immigration status of students and parents or restricted enrollment. And whereas the Board has adopted policies pertaining to law enforcement access to children. And whereas the Board is committed to ensuring safe and supportive learning environments for all students. And whereas the Board has directed the superintendent of schools to ensure all board policies are followed and to deny any law enforcement official access to students unless all due process of law provisions have been followed. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 497 Douglas County, Kansas, that the Board is opposed to any action of immigration and customs enforcement to interfere with the education of any student attending a public school. And be it further resolved, that the Board will take all appropriate action to protect students and their families.
Second.
Venture?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
I'm actually so excited for this next report. So, at this time, we will have, we will have a report from the LMH Health Finance and Operations Manager in school, oh, I even wrote that, who happens to be a school board candidate also, along with Carol Kudu, and their Leadership Academy. And we will hear from the Academy participants. So, this is a wonderful, like...
So, thank you for having us this evening. Again, my name's Erica Hill, and the Foundation Inclusion, sorry, I'm the Foundation Finance and Operations Manager. And I'm also the Director for the LMH Health Leadership Academy. So, I'd like to give a brief update and a brief, like, some background information on the Academy of how it came about. So, LMH Health has an Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Strategic Plan, and it has five core principles. One is recruitment and retention, education, patient care and experience, community partnerships, and health equity. And the LMH Leadership Academy is a direct outcome of the Community Partnerships principle. And it really is a great example of what we can do together when we collaborate with community partners and we're willing to really invest in the youth of our children, the lives of our children. So, at LMH Health, we created the Academy to provide hands-on healthcare executive experience, field trips, workshops, and trainings. It's a paid internship, which is a key equity piece of this program. They are here for eight weeks. They work about eight hours a day for most days, and three days a week, so about twenty-four hours a week. They'll get college and career coaching, volunteer service opportunities, as well as upon successful completion of the program, they'll be awarded a scholarship. And in partnership with LMH, excuse me, with partnership with the school district leaders and teachers, we selected three high school students. And preference was given to students whose race and/or ethnicity are traditionally underrepresented in healthcare. And what I've learned about this experience with the Academy is that if you provide an opportunity and an experience and an environment for students to thrive, they will. And Molly, um, sorry, I don't know where my name came from. But Molly, Amani, and Anna are, they have definitely thrived in this program. And when we publicly announced the Academy, we had several community members contact us asking us how they can help with the Academy. We had one generous donor said, "I want to fund the scholarships after they complete the program." Another person provided funding for their wardrobes. We went shopping a couple times, the professional wardrobes, that was kind of fun. A local photographer offered to take their professional headshots. And so we had a little photo shoot, that was fun as well. And they have been offered positions on community boards, of course, non-voting member. But it's to get a student's perspective, so we had opportunities to do that as well. And they've had several other opportunities, and many doors opened from this experience. And so, now I have the honor of introducing our Academy students. We have Amani Austin. You'll hear from her first. Next, you'll hear from Anna Toesta. And then, lastly, you'll hear from Molly Coffey. All right. Yours is not up. Okay, there you go. I think we got it.
Hi, everyone. My name's Amani Austin, and I'm here to present to you on Leadership, Health, and Equity in Education. So, just a little bit about myself. I'm going to be a senior at Free State High School in the fall. My career pathway, when I first signed up for the Academy, I wanted to be a pediatric physician. And within the first day, I think I changed my mind about seven times. And now I'm focused more on nursing and behavioral health. I applied to the Academy for the opportunity. I knew that I wanted to be in the healthcare field, I just wasn't quite sure where I was going to fit in yet. So, it was that opportunity to get my foot in the door and see, you know, what there was for me to choose from. And then the learning experience as well. I learned so much in the first day. We went to some meetings, and at first I was like, "Well, I'm not really sure what I'm going to do here." But I learned a lot, so that's great. And then the personal connections I made with not only the amazing staff at LMH, but also the interns as well. Better Together, just a little bit more about the internship itself. We had three main mentors, but we worked with so many other people. And from the, excuse me, from the, sorry, I'm a bit nervous. But from them, I had some observations, kind of the good and the bad of leadership. So, the bad parts, or not the bad parts, but some of the more difficult things can be communication. As a leader, it's important to be very transparent, but there are certain lines that you can't cross, you know? And some of the more rewarding parts are to have a voice or a seat at the table, because as a leader, you're often advocating for other people. The importance of leadership, in my opinion, or advocacy, as I mentioned earlier. You're speaking up with issues, but also insights, because I think it's important that as a leader, we're not bringing negative things to the table, but also the good things and celebrating those. One of the most important parts of being a good leader is more, in my opinion, to guide others, because a leader who rule, or a leader who tries to rule an organization rather than to lead them, it doesn't work out. So, the last thing that I think is really important is Better Together. It's to help others understand that without the importance of teamwork, an organization can't thrive. So, becoming an active leader, the question I asked myself was, what issues do I see in my community? And how can I present a solution to help fix them? So, in my bigger community, the Lawrence Douglas County area, there was the social, there's health inequity, which is social and the economic and environmental factors that affect your health status. And so, one of the main things with those can be education. So, I want to talk about how school experience can have a correlation to a student's health and their mental well-being. So, within Kansas, we, there is not any mandated laws that we have to teach mental health within school. We have a health class where we kind of group, like, go over them. But we don't have in-depth education on those, and I think that it's important that we do. And so, I'm going to talk about how a positive school experience can have a positive effect on a student's well-being. So, health inequity is what I'm going to talk about first. Health is defined as both the physical and mental health within an individual. So, we have the social determinants of health, which are factors and conditions that are present at not only the time of birth, but they also occur over time. So, these are economic stability, your neighborhood and built environment, health and healthcare, social and community, and education, which, in my opinion, is one of the most important. So, only two states in the United States at this time mandate mental health. And do you guys think that Kansas is one of them? Sorry, it's not. Only New York and Virginia mandate mental health education within their school systems. So, it's not mandated within the schools to be taught. How many hours of education do you think educators are required to have per calendar year? And anyone can guess. Okay. It's only an hour for an entire calendar year. And I personally just don't think that that's enough time. So, some statistics on education and mental health and how they're correlated. One in every five students in the U.S. will show signs of symptoms of a mental health disorder in a given year. So, these are things like stress, which can lead to panic and anxiety attacks, depression and self-harm, and eating disorders. Seventy-nine percent of teachers in secondary and primary school reported an increase of mental distress, so things such as depression, anxiety, and substance abuse. And seventy-five percent of adolescents in the Kansas area said that their barrier to healthcare was lack of knowledge or support. And that comes from the Kansas Adolescence Needs Assessment of 2015, so relatively new. So, by this point in time, I hope you guys are wondering, how can we help? And my answer to that is, we intervene. We have a more upstream approach versus a downstream approach. So, in the classroom, major problems that are linked to mental health include chronic absence, that is missing ten percent or more of the total days that you're enrolled in school, low achievement, as well as disruptive behavior, and, you know, eventually that can lead to dropping out. The main things I want to touch on are bullying and cyberbullying. Up to thirty percent of young people could be bullied on an almost daily basis. And, sorry, let me go back to my main idea. Bullying and cyberbullying, bullying used to be something that had happened in school. And then when you left and you went home, you could kind of leave that there. But with the integration of technology in today's youth, cyberbullying now is something that you have to face with at home. So, it's not something that you can really get rid of or leave and kind of de-stress from that. Twenty-three percent of kids who are victims of bullying sought psychiatric treatment before the age of thirty. And then this is something that I thought was super interesting. It can alter parts of the brain called the Caillou date and the pudiman, and they're crucial in memory and learning. So, a little bit more information on that. The Caillou date plays a crucial role in how the brain learns and how it processes memories and uses information from past experiences to influence future actions. So, the example I give of that is, in the past, if you had an activity that you really enjoyed, you know, really made your heart burst whenever you did it, but you were made fun of or bullied for that, in the future, you're not going to do that because of that past experience. So, that means that something that you're really enjoying, you're not doing anymore. And I just don't think that that's right. And then the pudiman regulates movements and affects learning. So, both of these are very crucial in the development of a child's brain. And if we have bullying that happens almost every day, it's just not there. So, how to intervene? My idea is that if we provide a better school experience for students, they'll have better overall health. So, my plan is to integrate a club in my school called Conversations for Change. And what the goal of that is, is to create a safe space where we communicate, advocate, and help those who need it the most. So, it's student-run, which is one of the most important parts in my idea, or in my opinion, because if we sit down at a table with a bunch of students and we just have a free-flowing conversation, you'll learn a lot more about a student and what we face on a daily basis than you would if you have a teacher and a student sit down one-on-one and have a teacher ask questions. It provides a safe space for all kinds of conversations. So, it's not directed at one group of people or one specific subject, it's whatever you want to talk about. And then it's sponsored by teachers. And I think that this is important, because those teachers who volunteer their time to come and sit with this club and listen in on it, will hear some very crucial information that could potentially be life-saving. Because building these relationships could really change somebody's life in a time of crisis. Schools who have integrated mental health programs into their education saw an increase in grades, self-esteem, and overall child health. So, one of the things that I learned about at the hospital was strategic planning. Every time that the hospital introduces a new idea or something that they want to do, they create a strategic plan on how they're going to do it. Because it's easy to have a big goal, but it's kind of hard to get, to make the steps to get there. So, this is just kind of an example of what I would do with my own club. So, in closing, just some final thoughts on the Academy and my experience. Leadership is important regardless of the size of the organization. If you have a school club or even LMH Health, without a great leader, the program can flop. Also, to soak up as much knowledge as possible regardless of where you are. It doesn't matter if you're at a soccer game or if you're sitting in on a meeting. You can learn so much from wherever you are. And then, never to stray away from an opportunity. When I first turned in my application, I was a bit doubtful in myself. As most people, I feel like tend to be, are, we're more self-critical as humans than we are critical of others. And I just say, I just want to say that you should take every opportunity that you can, because, you know, you never know what could happen from it. And then personally, self-growth that I saw in myself from the program, I learned a lot about myself and how I learn and how I work and how some things, personality traits that I had that I initially thought were kind of negative about myself, I learned the positive side of them, and that's super important. So then, some future plans that I have is to apply my leadership skills from LMH Health in my personal life. So, that goes along with my high school plan, I hope to build it. And I hope that it grows beyond my last year at Free State. And then I also plan to apply for nursing school and to get my bachelor's in science, Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. So, just a final thought. So, just a final thought. Myself, or my personal purpose is that I want to be an advocate and help create the change that the world needs to see. So the last thought I wanna leave you with is, I know my purpose, and I wanna know if you all know yours. Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Amani? Yes. Mind blown. So, thank you so much.
You've given us some things to think about, I think, for sure.
Yes.
So thank you.
Come on up. At this time, we have Anna. Anna, Anna, Anna.
Hi, I'm Anna Toesta, and I'm going to be speaking about the Leadership Academy and Emotional Intelligence. So a little about myself, I'm seventeen years old, I am a senior at Lawrence High School. I moved here to Lawrence from a big city in Brazil in 2016 in order to get an overall better quality of life. So why did I apply to the academy? I wasn't quite sure what it was when our teacher, our pre-med teacher, talked about it in class, but she told us that it was a summer internship, it was going to be at the hospital, and I was like, "Ooh, hospital." That's where I wanna be when I grow up, because initially I wanted to be a pediatric oncologist. Now I'm not so sure, but that's why I applied, and I wanted to be able to make connections with people and have new experiences and learn new things. And I am happy to say that the program did not disappoint, and I definitely learned so, so, so much, not only about myself, but about healthcare and the real world and everything that's out there. So, something that I did learn is that there are so many careers in healthcare that I had never heard before. Like, I thought that it was just, you know, doctor, nurse, surgeon, and okay, but then now I know about like the administrative side of things, IT, volunteer services, and there's all this, there's so much more to it than just that, and that was, that's been really good in my search for what I wanna do in the future. I also got to take a peek in what happens behind the scenes, so how the hospital is run and all the meetings and decisions that have to be made in order to ensure that the patients are getting like the best experience that they can get. And something else that I learned is that, you know, it can be easy for us teenagers to look at adults, especially, you know, the very successful ones, like our mentors or amazing people like Erica Hill, and we can think, "Wow, they have it all figured out," but... But that's not always the case. Like, adults struggle with things, sometimes, sometimes they have flaws that they're still trying to work on, and so that was kind of, kind of helpful for me too, to think like, "Okay, they're kinda like us." So, yeah. And there's so much more that I learned, but if I did talk about that, it would, it would take forever. So, how do I think this is going to help me in the future? So, besides the fact that it's gonna look awesome on college applications, I've learned things during these eight weeks that are going to help me so much with things like public speaking, so what I'm doing right now. And it's given me the confidence to feel like I can maybe lead people towards an important cause, and I feel like it's given me more problem-solving skills, and it's just, I've just learned so much, and it will definitely help me in the future. So, leadership. This whole academy was kind of focused on leadership with us being with our mentors, who are leaders of the hospital, for these eight weeks, and I've just learned a lot about it. So first of all, you don't have to be an actual like leader with a title to have leader-like skills. Everyone should have these, and they're very important. And also, leaders always have something new to learn. Like, they don't have, they don't know everything, and that's also, I feel like that's important to know. And we are better together. So leaders have to work together with people to achieve goals, they can't just tell you what to do and just, you know, you have to be involved in order to achieve success. And you should always be treating people as your equal, because we are all made up of the same stuff, and we all do have qualities that can contribute to an organization's success. Other traits that I realize are very important when you're a leader are communication skills, being supportive, like if you're a support system to people, that can be very important. Having an open mind, which can be hard for some people, especially if you're raised a certain way, but if you have an open mind, you're open to everyone and everything, and you kind of relieve yourself of judgment, and it opens so many new doors and you meet so many new people, and that's very important. Accountability, being accountable for things, problem-solving skills. So Russ Johnson, the CEO of the hospital, on like my first week there, he told me that a leader should run to the roar, which, so running to the roar being the problem. So basically, what that means is like, don't run away from your problems, run to them, solve them, because running from your problems isn't going to help you. Like, you can run from them and you can hide from them, but eventually they're, they'll just creep back at you, and so. Having fun, you should have fun, and you should be fun. That makes, that makes the environment lighter and happier, and it makes it easier to work. And having empathy is definitely very important. As a leader, if you're empathetic, it like conveys the message to other people that you care and you want to help people achieve their goals, and I feel like that is definitely very important. So, here's a quote that I like. "What you do has far greater impact than what you say." And what this basically means to me is that actions speak louder than words, and as a leader, you need to be very aware of that. You need to show people that you care and that you're a competent leader. So, yeah. Emotional intelligence, your EQ. So, all the traits that I was just talking about, they all tie into your EQ in some way. And the dictionary definition of EQ is, "The capacity to be aware of, control, and express one's emotions, and to handle interpersonal relationships judiciously and empathetically." Whenever I'm defining EQ, I like to kind of tie it back into IQ, your intelligence quotient, because most people hear about IQ, but they don't necessarily hear about EQ, even though it's so important to have emotional intelligence, because it can really help with your professional and personal development and success. Because as it says there, like, you might, you might know stuff, you might know all the words to A. Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, or you might know a hundred digits of pi, and, you know, but that doesn't really matter. Like, knowing that stuff doesn't matter if you don't have the emotional intelligence skills to, you know, interact with people positively and being a good person. So, yeah. There are two main kinds of emotional intelligence. So there is, there are the personal capabilities, which is self-awareness, self-management, and motivation. So it's like your own skillset and how you manage yourself emotionally, and then your social capabilities, so empathy and social skills, which is your ability to interact successfully with other people, the people surrounding you, whether that be your neighbor, or your partner, or your boss, or anyone. This is just another thing, showing self, like, all of the five skills. I hope that you guys were able to take the survey. If you didn't, that's okay, you can take it in your own time. But, so it was a survey, just kind of measuring how well you're doing with your emotional intelligence. And so the first one of those that I'm going to talk about is empathy. So, putting yourself into each other, into, sorry, putting yourself in other people's shoes. Empathy is very fundamental to emotional intelligence and to your ability to interact with others in a positive way. On the survey that I sent, there were three statements relating to empathy, those being, "People have told me that I'm a good listener, I find it difficult to read other people's emotions, and I use active listening skills when people speak to me." So if you're, if you find that you're good at these, chances are you're pretty empathetic and pretty sympathetic as well. And then speaking of sympathy, so whenever people talk about empathy, they always kind of tie it to sympathy and, "Oh, you know, how do they compare?" And so, when you're sympathetic towards someone, you know, you feel bad for them, you wanna be there for them, you support them, whereas when you are empathetic, you can actually feel what they're feeling, maybe because you've been through the situation before and you know what they're going through in better detail. So as an example, let's say I have been struggling with weight loss, and it's really starting to bother me, so I open up to two friends of mine. Friend A is very sympathetic, and she's like, "Oh wow, I am so sorry you're going through that, it must feel horrible. If you need me, I'm here." And, you know, that makes me feel like, okay, I'm very supported, I have a good support system, she's my friend and she's there for me. Whereas my other friend is actually empathetic, she tells me, you know, "A couple years ago, I was going through the same thing, and I know how hard it is, but trust me, you will get through it." That added, the fact that I can relate to that friend makes me feel so much better, and makes me feel like, "Wow, she did it," so can I. And so, that's why it is so important to have empathy, because it forges deeper relationships and deeper connections, and it makes communication way easier and more effective. Next one is self-awareness. Knowing, being aware of what you're feeling and being able to use that to guide yourself through situations. On the, the survey, there were three statements again about self-awareness, those being, "I can recognize my emotions as I experience them, I know my strengths and weaknesses, and I ask people for feedback on what I do well and how I can improve." So, it's really important to be good at these things, so you can have a deep view within yourself, and it can help you work towards your personal goal, you know, like your personal mission, and so you can get, you know, better. Yeah. So yeah, how do you, to develop and increase self-awareness, it can be very difficult for some people, but some little things that I found are actually, might actually be very helpful, is one, to look at yourself objectively. So trying to see yourself as who you really are, not necessarily who you want to be, but who you are, and how do you, how do you fix what you wanna be fixed. Keeping a journal, it seems kind of corny, like, you know, but it can actually be very helpful if you sit down at the end of the day for like, I don't know, two minutes, write down your successes and failures of the day, and to see that on paper, it can really help you be aware of like, "Wow, I need to work on this," rather than just thinking about it and then just letting it escape your mind. And then to ask trusted people to describe you, so someone that's close to you and someone that will be honest to you, honest with you, you just ask them to describe you, because lots of times, the way that people see you is different than the way that you see yourself, so that can be very helpful in being self-aware. And this is just an image that I kind of, people see it differently, but I kind of see it as a person being self-aware, and so they have all these pieces in their brain, like all these qualities and all these flaws and all these things, and then he's kind of looking at each of them individually and looking, "How can I improve this? How, how am I performing on this or that?" And so, that's how I kind of see it. And I think it's pretty interesting. So, self-management. How we manage ourself and our emotions and being able to handle emotions in effective ways. So, on the survey again, the three statements were, "I lose my temper when I feel frustrated, I know how to calm myself, myself down when I feel anxious or upset, and I find it difficult to move on when I feel frustrated or unhappy." So, yeah, so, it's very important to be good at these things, because managing yourself allows you to be able to, first of all, if you're a leader, if you don't know how to manage yourself, you can't really manage other people. So, yeah, and if you're not a leader, this is still very important, because before you can adequately handle other people's emotions and deal with them and know what to say, I guess, you need to know how to handle yourself. And then some management skills that are important to have is positivity. So if you're positive, positivity is like infectious. If you're a positive person, you will bring happiness to other people around you. So try to not be negative, you know, try to be a positive person. And then stress management, because stress gets to so many of us, I think all of us actually. And if you know, if you learn how to manage stress, you can be more proactive and just happier and just, it's just much better. And responsibility, so taking care of tasks that come your way, and then also being responsible for your actions, because again, sometimes we don't manage ourselves well, and if we get into a situation where you're frustrated, maybe you don't act, maybe you don't react well to it. If you, you're, you know, to get better at managing yourself, you need to first recognize, "Okay, I did not do this correctly," so take responsibility for your actions and, yeah. And then productivity, to just be productive and don't just sit there doing nothing, you know? Try to, actually try to make yourself a better person. And also, once you do get better at managing yourself, it's much easier to live a happier and stress-free life. Now, motivation. That is the drive to work towards your goals and aspirations, no matter what life throws at you. On the survey, we had again the three statements. "I find it hard to focus on something over the long term, I feel that I don't enjoy my work, and I set long-term goals and review my progress regularly." So, if you are a person that finds it hard to focus on something over the long term and you don't enjoy your work, then that says that maybe you, you're not motivated enough, maybe you need to find something to motivate you to do good. And yeah, why is it important? Because that's what pushes us to do good, it's what pushes us to do, to reach our goals. And when talking about motivation, there's two kinds. There's extrinsic motivation and intrinsic motivation. Intrinsic motivation is that motivation that comes from within, because you love what you're doing and you, you have a passion for it and you actually want it to succeed because of that, because you have that connection to it. Whereas extrinsic motivation, it's more like, "Oh, I need to get this project done because I'm gonna get paid a whole bunch of money." Like, you're, you wanna get it done because you're gonna get something out of it. And then in that image, you can kind of see, there are two boys playing soccer. One of them is motivated to win because it makes him happy, he loves doing that. The other one is thinking about the trophy and what he's going to get out of it. And then some elements that make up motivation is your achievement drive, so like your personal drive to get what you want to get done, commitment to our goals, initiative, your readiness to act, and optimism. And also resilience is also very important. And then social skills is our last of the five skills and emotional intelligence, and that's, you know, the skills to efficiently communicate and interact with other people. So, on the survey, again, three statements. "I enjoy organizing groups, I avoid conflict and negotiations, and I struggle to build rapport with others." Having social skills is obviously very, very important from the moment when you're in, you know, in preschool, you need to start learning how to do that, and sometimes even adults struggle with having good social skills, so it's really important to, to get a hold of those. And it's important because, you know, by nature, we are social animals, and having these skills helps us communicate effectively and be considerate to others and of the feelings of others, and we can also learn how to express our own feelings much better if you have social skills. Yeah, to wrap this all up, I chose this quote, which I think is very prevalent in the world that we live in today with all this technology constantly evolving. "As more and more artificial intelligence is entering into the world, more and more emotional intelligence must enter into leadership." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. I took the quiz and it was, it was eye-opening, so, yeah. I think everyone should take it every once in a while. Anyone else have any comments, questions? At this time, we'll have Molly come up.
My name's Molly Coffey, and I'll be presenting Leadership in My Eyes. In the past six weeks, I've introduced myself to more than a hundred people, so to give you the quick rendition, hi, my name's Molly Coffey, I'm a rising senior at Lawrence High School, and I'm one of the executive interns at the Leadership Academy. When I heard about the Leadership Academy, I was in school, and my pre-med teacher, like Anna, was reading us the flyer. She was going on about how it's an internship offered to those underrepresented in the healthcare field. And get this, it was at the hospital. There was also paid internship, a scholarship, hands-on experience. What did I hear? It's at the hospital. So that day is when I started writing my application, and I turned it in very quickly because I'm a very overachieving person. Fast forward a month later, I get the call from this goddess, Erica Hill, saying, "Congratulations, you're one of the three." And what did Erica Hill get back? A screaming sixteen-year-old kicking the air in excitement. Because me, sixteen-years-old, I'll be working in a hospital. It may not be my dream job, but it's as close as I could get at this age. Um, also with hands-on healthcare executive experience. We got very hands-on experience. We were unfortunately unable to oversight a surgery at the hospital. But Ortho Kansas isn't the hospital. So Anna and I, we have already gotten the privilege to watch a surgery. And that moment in memory will be implanted in me forever. It'll be the moment or the memory I remember when I'm in medical school and it's second sleepless night or the pile of homework is continuing to grow. And I'll just reflect on that and remember my dedication to get on the other side of that sanitation line. Shaping my leadership. When we were starting the program, all three of us, we were hit with a surplus of information. And yes, it was very difficult to comprehend it. But, um, the mentors and other senior leadership and not just senior leadership, but other leaders in the hospital, they really showed us what a leader is. And I know I can't be like Ev, who's one of the most open and joyful persons I've ever met. Or Erica, the most professional person ever. But I can learn from them. I can learn active listening skills from Ev. When he takes a step back from the conversation or the meeting he was running, to hear what his colleagues had to say. Hear their voices, hear their opinions and then carry on with his decision-making. I can learn from Erica that even if you build a whole academy, summer internship about leadership, you're never done learning. Leadership is something that you always keep working at. And one of the most surprising lessons I learned was from Russ Johnson, the CEO and president of LMH. He very openly admitted that he did not understand or know of the issues that persons of color, women of color face on a daily basis. And not only did he, um, own up to being ignorant about those things, he asked for our opinions on how we can help, how we can help him, how we can help the hospital, how we can overall help this community. Because we have a lot of different cultures and communities intertwined. Um, and better together is one of the core values at the hospital. It's better together. If you're together, everything gets finished quicker and more, yeah, better. And I have quite a few names on there because I could think of those instantly. Of when I saw someone putting to their, someone showing the better-together quality. Even with the simplest gestures, like inviting me to shadow with Dr. Tate. Just because he heard that this internship was starting up and he wanted to make sure that his voice and his journey, we got to see, or at least I got to see. And with the better-together core values, I can't wait to be on the other side and be showing those moments. Because I've decided that in my senior year, I'll be taking the CNA class, uh, that's offered at the high school, at the College and Career Center. To not help with just making money, but also understand what it's like on a nurse, nursing perspective. Because a fairly large issue is doctors and surgeons thinking for granted their help they get from nurses and how much work they actually put in. So to have that perspective in my bag, ready to pull out whenever, I can surely become a better leader. Also, I have friends in HR, so I know I can get it. You're retiring. And then also with education, a major step would be taking the mental he- health first aid class they offer at Burt Nash. It's an eight-hour seminar. It costs thirty dollars and I recommend this to everyone. Yes, I haven't gone, but I will be going, not on just one occasion, but multiple and you all should too. You will learn quite a lot. I am planning to take this because I want to make sure that in the future, if I have a patient who needs a certain task done a certain way, I will know why. And I will be able to further accept and believe my stress I have on my mental health. And yeah. Uh, administration versus clinical. One of my main issues that's been progressing through this program is I started to like the administration side of healthcare. I enjoyed going to meetings and looking at strategic plans and just constantly on the move. But still, orthopedic surgery is, um, my dream job that soon hopefully I'll be doing. And with Cheryl, she told me that I don't have to choose, choose via of the LLC. And for what I understand is that it's a board created or made of physicians that are self-appointed by other physicians to have a small self-governing, uh, board. And personal connections is one of the main things that I have learned. Is personal connections can mean everything, formal, informal, or whatever. And with our mentorship, yes, I got to be with the amazing Michael Williams. He's a great mentor, but I also got to become, oh, really good friends and have another mentor with Cheryl, who's holding my nephew in that photo. Yeah, um, and friendships and informal relationships in the work environment can create a safer, more lighthearted working environment that has led, or studies in a 2015 US survey, that it led to better productivity and better overall mental health. Is this anyone's water?
Yours.
I personally don't have a problem with opening up and becoming, uh, or making personal connections. And that is one of the skills that I value in myself. Because I was able to make emotional connections with all the different leaders, not just senior leadership at the hospital, where I got to hear their core values, their, their road to success and how they plan to further it. And I in some way can help with furthering their core values. Confidence. Confidence is key. At least that's what we heard. And this is focused on self-confidence. In what you create, what you do, how you speak and whatever. But I want to focus on confidence in your coworkers. Because I have seen a little bit of this growing up and in the hospital. That when you don't have confidence in your coworkers, you create an environment of insecurity and, um, you show your personal insecurity that you don't think your coworkers or colleagues are able to do what the task is at hand. Leading to a worse work-life environment. And also inspiring confidence. It's can be very small. Just acknowledging a coworker or colleague doing something relatively nice. And that will push others in the work, in the office to continue and try to do better and better. Uh, the hospital does this. It's their acknowledgement cards that all senior leadership does every Tuesday. And it's shown a lot of better work environment. And communication. Communication was oddly enough, not one of the main skills that I saw or I thought needed to be in a leader. But communication and clear language, they go hand in hand. Clear language is focused on the listener, not the speaker. It's making sure that even if you're, let's say sixteen or seventeen-year-old intern, you'll be able to understand what's going on. And that's extremely important when it comes to crucial conversations. Like if there's a change in budgeting or benefits at your company. And there's some people who might not be all that happy about it. But the way you present it with the CEO and the, um, CIO? That they take you through every step and the reasons, like being in the market or whatever else. That yes, you may not be that happy with the changes, but you understand what the changes are. Um, and with the Leadership Academy, I've decided to take everything that I've learned and put it into a community that I am a part of. It's the Native Americans and Native American youth. I have, I opened an Instagram profile just today during lunch. That's why there's only two followers and. But yeah, it's for Native American youth. And, oh, it stands for Native American Youth and Statistics Source. You can look up naas.educated.tomorrow on your Instagram and follow. If you all have Instagram. And you can look at quick snapshots of statistics or major concerns facing my community today. And I'd like to end us with this quote by Verdel. "When you know who you are, no one can take that away from you." And it, and it really struck home with me because before this, I thought title was everything. I have to work to become a doctor and everyone will call me Dr. Coffey, because that's who I am. But as this has gone along and I've met so many people with such high titles, that, that doesn't define them. It defines their personal connections and how they treat others. Thank you. Also, since I'm the last speaker, I get the honor to invite you guys to our final capstone and graduation ceremony on August second.
Oh, sorry. Oh, that's me. Sorry. Thank you so much. It was a wonderful presentation and, um, I know, I'm just so speechless. I mean, how do you follow that? Um, lovely job and I can't wait to see what the future holds for you all. So thanks again and please share that wealth of knowledge.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, so, oh, sorry. I didn't do that.
You guys are great. You're really impressive. Um, and you're absolutely right. This is going to look awesome on your college applications. Uh, I'm curious and you don't have to tell me, but what are you thinking about? And what's the, what are the kind of the dream schools that you're, you're thinking you might want to go to?
I, I think I should warn you that he is a psych professor at KU as you move on answering this question. I know what he's angling for very well.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk later.
I, I just wanted to say that you, um, did a wonderful job and thank you for sharing your learning with us. Um, and, uh, thank you to the hospital and to all the staff involved and people who volunteered with this program. These are the kind of experiences that, um, are just so, so important to what we are trying to do for our students. And it does take, uh, strong partnerships like this one to make them successful. So thank you for all the work that you have done to, um, give these young ladies, um, this amazing experience that I hope will, um, really help them shape their futures.
But I really, but I really want to know. No, I'm serious. If you don't want to say in public, maybe we could chat a little bit afterwards. I'm just curious.
I, I know that people are watching this wondering what you just said and they missed it on the, um, they can't pick it up. So, uh, Amani said that she's headed to Baker and Johnson County. And, um, Molly, you're next on the picture, um, mentioned Haskell and med school after. Um, and you had mentioned in your slide, uh, Amani, that you were looking at maybe, um, a nurse. There was a step beyond nursing that you had talked about, I think I read or.
Yes, behavioral.
Behavioral health, yeah, okay. And then, um, Anna, right? Anna, um, that you had mentioned that you were headed to hopefully KU, right? For your undergraduate and the middle school's coming. So I, I have a couple of things. So, uh, I had the opportunity to meet with Erica and you kind of explained to me your vision of this program. And one of the things you said was that you hoped that this would show students all the different things and ranges within the healthcare field. And all three of, of your, um, first interns mentioned, um, their exposure to this, this rich world of, of health, of the healthcare profession and saw themselves in multiple places. So congratulations. I mean, this is clearly a huge success. Um, and I, I am delighted that, that you had, um, the initiative and that, and, and saw this through for these particular students. And I have to say, Molly, you talked about personal connections and I swear to goodness, your name has come up in my ho- in my house. Um, my dau- my daughter is Stella Tungy. She really is. She's really my daughter. And she tells me, she, when she's studying, she's like, I'm going to talk to Molly about this. So you must be very well, um, your peers must also think very highly of your abilities. And, um, it's just really great to get to see you all, um, here tonight and, and I, I learned a ton. So thank you.
Yes.
I just, I just want to say your, your presentations were, were fantastic. Uh, I personally think healthcare is the best field you could go into professionally. Some people are laughing because I know that that's what I do for everything. Um, but I think, I think Michael could, could probably tell you where in the hospital, I think, is the best place that you can focus your energies in, in the healthcare field. But your, your presentations were, were fantastic. I think, I think you all have many opportunities ahead. And, and I think, like you said, I, I think it was, uh, a great opportunity to, to understand that healthcare is more than just practitioners. It's, it's, it's more than just providers. There's, there's, there's more there, which gives you more opportunities. Even if you start down the road as a provider, there's then more opportunities that you can go to from there, even with that, even with that background. So it was, it's fantastic.
Not to men- sorry, not to mention your, um, after this program is done, that you will be in committees um, around in our, in our community. So having that voice, um, you're using it great here. Continue to do so. You have a great impact.
I was just going to say, you guys did a great job. Congratulations to Erica and everybody who on staff helped. Um, I knew it was going to be cool, but it's really a lot cooler than I even realized it was going to be. So this is, this is exciting and I can't wait to see it grow in the coming years. So congratulations to all three of you.
Eric, um, did you want to introduce any other LMH staff you have here with you tonight?
We have Mae Johnson here, Director of Administration. We have Michael Williams, one of our executives, mentors. I O. We have Adam Taylor here, he's a chief, um, officer at LMH. Well, and we have Brian Wright, who's also one of our executives, uh, mentors. And he is Vice President of, sorry, for, there's many, many more people who have touched these interns.
in. Of mentoring them. It was definitely a team effort for the entire LMH family.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I just want to definitely thank Erica Hill and the entire LMH staff when they approached us with this idea. I mean, it was like a no-brainer, and I think what you saw tonight was definitely a true testament and a true example of what a true partnership is. And while you ladies were up there talking, I was just beaming with, with pride, because so, so proud of, of what you've done and the experiences. And for you to realize that, that you are trailblazers, you're, you're pioneers for this work, you're, you're the first ones to, to do this, and you knocked it out of the park, I will tell you that. And so those that, that come behind will have a huge task to, to, to complete. But, you know, we often talk about how we can partner more together with, with businesses and, and other organizations around the, the city. You know, we often talk about how we can recruit teachers, and you know, we talk about our teacher pipeline. But Lawrence Public Schools should be the pipeline for every company, every organization in this city. And I think LMH definitely has three great candidates for six, eight years down the road to come back to Lawrence and to know that you were once Free State and LHS students is just, just tremendous. Amani, whatever you need to, to get the club started, just let us know. You have an amazing team over at Free State that will be willing to help you get that, get that lifted. And so, again, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. Extremely proud of all of you.
And Molly, I think your Instagram followers grew already.
Nice.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. At this time, we'll have Kathy Johnson come up and report on the budget and Code 99 publication.
And lastly, as you, as you leave, I do, do want to say that I had conversation with Russ Johnson on the other day and Erica a couple of days ago. And just as much as you learn from LMH, they learn so much from you. And so there again, another testament of, of a true partnership. So thank you so much.
Would you mind, I'm doing an article for Lawrence Business Magazine on the impact of diversity. Would you mind if I just took 15 seconds to get a photograph of these women in front of?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Yeah, of course. Do we stand behind them or?
Do you want us to stand or just hide?
Just like duck.
Come around a little bit?
Squeeze in. Oh, that makes me really short. I'm going to go like that.
This would be worse.
I'm on my tiptoes. I'm on high heels.
I'm on my shorts. Can you see me?
No.
Not like I'm not in there. He didn't ask you. You got me? Okay.
Oh, that's so great. Can you see me? Oh, man. Hilarious.
Back to follow Kathy.
Hard act to follow. I'm going to have to switch gears to such a complex and interesting topic.
I'm not joking.
He's not joking.
I'm not joking.
Good, but you probably need to know some of this information. I'll try to be fast.
Okay.
All right. So tonight, we're going to do a quick review of the information that's in the Form Code 99 and some of the things as we've closed out the year end that I need to bring to your attention. We'll approve the, the form for publication, and we'll kind of go from there. So just kind of a reminder that today's the board meeting, the 12th will schedule the budget hearing, we'll approve the budget, and then it's Rupesworth County. When we look at our budget, and what you're approving tonight's going to include our mill-levied funds, which is our two operating funds, and our other levied funds, which is bond and interest, capital outlay, special assessments, and adult ed, cost of living. Our special revenue funds are all of these. And under government accounting or school district crowning, we've got all these funds, and each one is kind of a unique ledger, so that the expenditures related to that specific purpose are recorded in that specific fund. Lot of these actually are part of that general fund, legal max, and they just get transferred to this other pot or this other accounting ledger, and we record those expenditures there. The ones that primarily are there, which is, is important to know, is bilingual virtual professional development, special education, vocational, and the two at-risk ones at the bottom. So those are all part of that, and then just get moved over here. Other funds that are going to be in your Code 99 that gets approved tonight are a few non-budgeted funds, but we have to record actual expenditures, and that's these, these funds that are here, the textbook revolving, special reserve, which includes healthcare, work comp contingency, and then some of our activity at fund accounting that might not be in the gifts and grants budget, which is part of the document. So at the end of the report, you will see your Code 99, those are those maximum budget authorities and maximum mill-leveies, not the line item detail, but the total. And all of those are really our caps, our legal max, that's the, the big pot of money. We're going to go through a few of our special revenue funds. We talk a lot about our operating funds, but you do have some other funds that you do approve in this document, so I like to at least touch on them, so you at least are aware of what they are and what kinds of expenditures are out of there. A reminder that on our special revenue funds, we do publish high, because that's the best practice, that's guided to us. What we're doing is just permission to spend. That doesn't mean that's what we're spending, that doesn't mean we have those revenues to spend to meet that authority. Our spending is actually limited based on resources that are realized, not what we publish, but what we actually have and realize. The first one is just a reminder, we have our food service fund. It tracks all of our food service expenditures. The board approved July 8th the meals for 1920, and this chart is just sort of a snapshot of the history of what our meal prices have been over time, just a reference shot, not necessarily anything other than to just kind of let you know, looks like about a nickel increase every time we have increased prices. The fund is primarily made up of local revenues, state revenue, federal, and some cash carryover, total resources available. The chart below it is expenditure total, and it's primarily made up of wages, benefits, and food, and then a little bit of, of other. Reminder that we are publishing high, and we do that on purpose, because if food prices go up and we don't publish high enough, that could create a, a problem for us. So for example, if we had published at forty nine, $4.9 million in 1819, even though we have revenues of five, 5.4 million, I couldn't have spent that $61,422 above the 4.9, it would have been a statutory violation. So it's important that we publish high enough to absorb those expenditures that we need to. It's really just the permissions, the resources are there. It's not impacting the resources, but I'm technically not allowed to spend those resources without publishing in order to absorb them. Now, if I'd have published, you know, $8 million and I only had 5 million resources, that's all I'm going to spend, is up to those resources typically. Okay? So that's why those are published high. Drivers training, just another special revenue fund, it's really state aid, student fees, the whole purpose of it is to just record our expenditures related to driver's ed. The funding is like local state, and then the expenditures are wages and a little bit of rental for vehicles, et cetera. This is again, published high. We typically run one session. If we wanted to run two, we need to have it published high, because if we collect the fees, in order to have the second session, we need to be able to have the permission to spend those fees. And so that's what that looks like. Our fees for driver's ed right now are about 150 a student for driver's ed, which is, I think, a pretty cheap deal compared to some of the private ones. And so we haven't done or looked at that for a while, we may need to review that and see where our fees are relating to whether we're losing money or, or growing in cash balance, we're actually decreasing a little bit in this fund, so over time, we may ultimately have to, to look at these. Our summer school fund is also going to be in the Code 99. This one primarily tracks our summer school programs, summer music, summer weights, robotics, the summer credit recovery is paid from our K-12 at-risk, and summer school for students with special needs is actually reflected in special education. So it's really more of those enhancement kinds of things. And again, just a quick little snapshot of resources and where they come from, and then the total expenditures primarily being wages and some materials. Again, publishing a budget high, can't spend anything but we've, what we've collected in resources, and the average expenditures in our summer school programs have been around that 40 to 47,000 mark. As we've had robotics camp added, those expenditures in summer school have increased, because it's become a very popular camp, so. Parents' education is another one. This is a state grant. Within this state grant, we're required to also have a district match of 50%. These are for our infant to three-year-olds. And again, it is a state grant, so the majority of the dollars do come from a state aid grant, a little bit of transfer from general fund, and some local revenues help support this program as well. We have partnerships with Success by Six, we have other local places that we have gotten donations and things to help support this, this particular program. The next one that's on the budget document, which is just a really weird one, and that is this little revolving account that we have to put in our, our budget. It's, it's kind of weird this year, and it looks really different, because they didn't pay us for all four quarters in 1819, they only paid us three. What happens with this fund is it's the state aid that the state of Kansas pays for the employer match part of CAPERS or, or retirement for our employees. They used to just pay it directly to CAPERS, now they send it to us, we turn around and send it back to them, all in one day. But they only paid three quarters this year. So next year, we have to publish high enough to cover five quarters if they choose to make up that quarter. They may make just four, they may do three again. But we have to publish high enough to absorb that fifth quarter if they choose to do it. The last time that they were supposed to make the fifth quarter, they didn't, they just did four. So it's hard to know what they'll do, but we have to anticipate that we have to cover that. So it looks just really odd, because it goes and then goes down and then goes back up when you look at history there. Professional development is another one that's kind of outside the, the bigger fund. This one, we do get a little bit of state aid. You'll see in 1718, we got 87,000, this past year, 82,000, it is unaudited. We've published it high enough to be able to absorb what we can to get as much state aid as we can, but if we don't have the resources, we can't obviously have the expenditures, and we would not collect the state aid to it. So again, it's just a published high. The other purpose for publishing a little high in this fund is a lot of times, historically, we've sometimes sponsored a PD activity, and school districts have paid fees to us, and then we've paid for all the expenses. You'd have to have the budget, I can't speak, published high enough to be able to spend those resources if you chose to do that. And we've done a little bit, we used to do great big activities and, and do a lot of that a number of years ago, but, but now it's, it's a little more limited. This is real specific in that the, to be eligible for the state aid, it's certified staff only, they have to have an individual development plan in place with goals and objectives for their professional development needs. And then it needs to be, it could be a conference they attend, we could contract somebody for onsite, or do something outside their duty day. But the costs that are eligible are only those that are tied to that individual development plan that they have on file and their goals and objectives as it relates to that. And so we also then, as a district, have to have a plan filed with the state of Kansas, in-service professional development plans tied with, registered with the state.
So for something like that, you know, we published $100,000, just, and, and if we were to host a PD, would the fees that we bring in minus the expenses have to be under that published amount, or the total that we bring in in fees have to be under that amount?
The resources would allow us to spend, because we would have resources to spend, but it still has to be within that 100, 800.
Okay.
It'll have to be within that.
Okay.
You'll see then on the next that the resources are typically the, the local, the transfer and the stated. Most of this is really a transfer from the general fund to support it, and the state aid helps with that. Most of the expenditures are going to either be wages outside the duty day, just stipends that we pay, contracted services, that's going to be a lot of your subs, could be that you bring in a consultant or somebody to do a PD activity onsite, whether it's the power schools or beyond diversity or those kinds of things. Not much supplies and materials are actually eligible for state aid. And then the staff, staff travel is the other place where people go to conferences as a part of what's written in their individual development plan. What actually gets spent is based on what those professional development activities are, and those kind of evolve sometimes throughout the year. So that's kind of some of those special revenue funds that are going to be in your document but don't tie kind of to the big one, that, that ties to Form 150 and our big general fund, legal max. Any questions on those? They're kind of ones you've seen before, I just want to touch base, because they are in that total you're going to approve, and it's nice that you at least know they exist. Okay. And they really are spent for those purposes, revenues are for those purposes, it's just, that's what those special revenue funds are. The next then we'll go into is talk a little bit about what actually calculates our legal max, how we get there, and what is kind of that legal cap that we have to work within for 1920. So your basic enrollment is going to be on last year's enrollment, that was changed with the, the law a couple of years ago, but the waitings are actually going to be on 1920. What that means is, is that we don't know what those real numbers are until usually somewhere between January and April, as far as them being audited out and getting to our total. So we work through the Form 150, this is the legal form that we have to follow, this is what sets our cap, this is what the formula says we have to work with. So we start with our enrollment. This enrollment number is, we are actually using September 20 of 2018 FTE. If you remember last year, instead of using September 20 of 17, we actually used our declining provision and used from 16, because it was higher than last, last year. So we didn't have to lose the 49, so we start from the higher number and go forward, and this is about 88.8 FTE higher than what we were able to use last year. So that helps a little bit, but we are not growing by leaps and bounds like a lot of districts around us would particularly to East. So you get your total here for enrollment, and you get a little bit of an FTE related to our four-year-old at-risk students, and you get an FTE that will be then multiplied by the base state aid, and we get this little extra FTE because we're a high enrollment school district. The next waiting then is our bilingual waiting. This is based on some extra dollars tied to bilingual students, it's contact minutes with our ESL-endorsed teachers with those students, and that time then is logged. And the waiting helps pay for support, teachers in the ESL will end up getting either the headcount of those students or the contact minutes, whichever is higher when that audits out. Career and tech is the other one. These are all waitings, because certain pockets of students cost a little more than the average base state aid per pupil, so that's why they give us these waitings. The career and tech is tied to minutes attending on September 20 in a state-approved career and techs class. So if it's a state-approved class, and there's contact minutes in that class, it's all been approved by the state, then those minutes will generate some additional FTE that generates a little bit more dollars for us. Typically, those classes tend to have smaller class sizes because of the equipment and just the variety of kinds of things, you know, that, that are, are why they're considered in this category, auto classes, shop classes, some of our, our classes, things like that. Again, this one is, you know, the minutes are a little bit high, we aren't going to realize the dollars unless they actually get audited out, so we can't count on the money being there until the auditor says yes or no. The at-risk funding is money that comes to us as it relates to our at-risk population of, of needs. The funding is just based on free lunch, but it is not any part-time students, and we can't count them if they're 19 and over. So it's not completely free lunch only. That's how the funding is generated. The expenditures have to be spent on things that meet the at-risk guidelines, evidence-based research is expected to be followed, and districts are supposed to be able to demonstrate that students are performing better as a result of these dollars, helping them with those at-risk circumstances versus if the funds were not available to them. So there should be some differentiation in student performance or student. able to demonstrate that students are performing better as a result of these dollars, helping them with those at-risk circumstances versus if the funds were not available to them. So, there should be some differentiation in student performance or student proficiency as it relates to funds being available for them. There is currently, this is the money that's under post-legislative audit, so we may find that going forward, some of the criteria changes when we learn what that is. Or if there is something different, we'll report that back and share it. Again, we published this a little bit high because we don't know what our free lunch count is going to be on September 20 next year. We only know what it is currently and what it was last year. Enrollment, Lawrence is very transient. Those kids come and go, but it is whatever is official is September 20 count. The other thing that Lawrence generates a little bit is-- that didn't come in. I guess this just shares with you how we're spending it currently. We are using some extended-day tutoring, credit recovery during the summer. We're doing some prorated share of our certified teachers and/or learning, instructional learning coaches. And then, there's some elementary instructional support services for math and reading that this money is spent on. The district is also generating a little bit of money because of a high-density formula. This is new to Lawrence in 1718, so it does give us a little bit more money for at-risk funding. This kind of is a chart that they go by. It's based on the projected at-risk percentage for September 20. Again, we don't know that, so we kind of have to use what we know now. And then, those buildings that are 35 to 50 with free a percent there, we'll get a little bit of FTE if you're over 50, and that calculates that into this formula to generate an additional 105.2 FTE that can be used to generate a few more dollars for the at-risk funding. So, I don't know if there's any questions on that, but that's kind of how that piece works. The next one, if I'm going too fast or you want me to stop or explain something differently, let me know. Transportation is the next waiting. This is for those students that are transported two and a half miles or further. This formula is a density factor. It's all down into the formula, but the bottom line is whatever it calculates to, we get that or 1617, which is ever is higher, but we can't have more than 110% of our actual expenditures from the previous year. So, again, there's kind of a convoluted cross-check here, cross-check there, and then, this is what you get for those dollars. And then, they just take those dollars and divide it by the base state aid per pupil to get an FTE that would then calculate back out when you get to the end. This doesn't cover 100% of our regular education costs, about 81% probably, and it doesn't consider special education, which is a different formula. We get no new facility money next year or ongoing. It's those two-year kind of window of money was not for ongoing costs. There is no replacement revenue. It's gone. And the new bond issue that we have or anything going forward would not be eligible for this. So, these are dollars that go away, and that can be challenging because we have committed some of that to ongoing costs, and so, we're having to absorb that, and that's part of our challenge. Special education is a whole different formula from, it's not based on students, but we back into a student count. So, it's based on teachers, and we have to estimate our certified teachers. We have to estimate our PARAs. We only get 40%. We get a grand total. We get a teacher amount and calculate that out. Then, we get transportation at 80%. We don't know if we'll need catastrophic aid or not, but we have to publish for it because if we get it, we need to be able to absorb it and spend it, and the same with the Medicaid. So, then, it comes to a formula calculation down here. We only get dollars based on what is realized. And this, I'll talk a little bit more about the impact of this number here that has changed because it is going down on us instead of up, and that is creating some loss of resources, which is creating a more significant decrease in balances that is challenging going forward.
Kathy, can you refresh my memory as to what the catastrophic state aid would be used for?
Catastrophic aid would be for a student that costs more than $50,000 to the district. So, maybe we have to send them to some place for their service.
Private school placement?
Yeah. Well, not always private school placement. It could be that we can't serve them in our community, and so, we send them to St. Mary's or like just different places that have us, that can deal with their needs. But a lot of times, we've had students that have one child that's cost as much as $200,000. So, anything over 50 is considered catastrophic, and then, we get 50% kind of back on that. So, there is some help with that, but those can happen. And if they're students in our district, we are required to serve them based on what their needs are. And so, we don't have many of those students that cost that kind of money, but we have had them in the past. And so, this year, we didn't happen to have any, but the year before, we did. And so, it's something that we need to plan for. May not get it. We won't realize the dollars. We won't have the authority to spend, but we do have to plan as though it's possible.
Thank you.
Yeah. Kevin could probably articulate that better if he were yours. Kevin Herl, but he's not, so.
That makes sense.
The Medicaid replacement is just a formula around Medicaid and special education support, and we never quite know what that's going to be. So, we try to estimate based on history and hope we're close. We get a dollar amount, and all they do is divide it by the base state aid per pupil to get an FTE that goes back into Form 150 so it can calculate back out later. So, that's how that works. Virtual education, they've actually taken out of the formula and just created a state aid amount. The state aid amount is at a published high. We typically, and you'll see on a later slide what the high difference is, but we do that because they don't cut off enrollment like right now where we kind of know what it is. It can carry forward. And so, we want to make sure that we have that published high enough on September 20 if those kids are there that we can realize the revenue. Again, if the resources don't come, we don't have the dollars. We can't plan on spending it. It's for virtual education, so it would need, virtual programming would have to stay within the dollars that they generate. Cost of living. Cost of living is something that was created for districts that have a high cost of living. It's a formula based on the statewide average appraised value of a single-family residence. You multiply it by 1.25, and then, you come up with an average, and you subtract that. And if you're within a certain percent, it's possible that you get some additional budget authority as it. When we first were able to realize any cost of living, it was about 4.37% of our general fund. We chose not to go that high because we knew this was a volatile and very, very, it could change every year, and we didn't want to be cutting and adding, cutting and adding. So, we chose at about $1.2 million amount, which is about 2.18. You will see that last year, we were below that amount, and this year, it's projected to be below that amount again. So, instead of the 1.2, last year, we were at 1.198, and it's going down a little bit based on projections because we published high. It will actually be lower than this number when it's all said and done because it's based on the formula of White's Refinal General Fund Legal Maxes, and then, it will calculate back out. So, it'll be less than this number when we're all said and done. I did want to share that in Lawrence, we only have the cost of living available to us to help go beyond what our statutory legal max calculates to. Our cost of living is projected, this is on 1819 information, not on what we're planning because we don't know what districts are getting. So, this is something that I pulled from the state. But for 1819, our amount was the $1,198. But you can see Blue Valley has a 5%, which is the max, as does DeSoto, and Shoney Mission has 4.29. Oletha has the 4.59. Shoney Mission is no longer getting declining enrollment dollars, so that's something that's gone away from them. So, they're probably having to adjust that decrease in dollar authority. But you'll see that the districts that are really growing around us have an extra boost on top of their legal max calculation for those amounts that are sitting there last year. And so, that allows them to have their legal max calculation, but then, they get this additional funding like we get our COLA, but we don't get near as much as those 7 million, 20 million type numbers for those other districts.
So, okay, I'm the first to admit, I do not, this is all a little bit jumbly in my brain, so bear with me for what might be a fairly ignorant question. If we were to raise our percent that we do in COLA, it wouldn't help us generate any more money.
Can't raise it. That's the legal amount I can have.
Okay.
It used to be 4.37.
It used to be, but now, it's not.
It's given to me, and that's all I get.
Gotcha. Okay.
Can't do anything with it other than what they give me.
Okay.
It's a formula calculation. Can't change it. Can't do anything but live with it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And it is going down slightly now on us. And that was the whole reason we never went to the max is once you use it, and if you spend it on ongoing, then you got to cut it. So. When you get all said and done, that kind of creates this weighted amount times the base state aid plus the virtual and gets you a number. Add in your cost of living, and this gets you to what is considered a published legal max. That's your cap. That's all you get. That's what you're publishing as your maximum. That won't be what we actually get when it's all said and done. There's things we've published high, and they need to come out of that number for us to get back to a planning one that we can actually believe we'll realize. But we have to publish it, and that's what it is. And it's a formula here. It's based on enrollment. It's not based on a mill levy. It's not based on anything but what we just talked about. That's the only way you can generate budget authority. So, it's a cap. When you look at that then, and you look at your 33%, and you publish, this is last year's legal max. This is what we had to work with. This is what we're publishing. This is where, but we'll get less than this. When you look at that, there is a bigger number than what we're planning, but that's because we're publishing higher than what we know we're going to realize. When you look at that difference, you'll see where we published high. We published contact minutes and bilingual higher than we're expecting to have. We published free lunch higher than we're expecting to have. We published virtual higher than we're expecting to have. We published special education higher than we expected to have. We did that because we have volatile variances that will occur between now and what we know June 1 to be our final number. We have to have that ability of flexibility. Fully don't anticipate that we will get there unless for some reason, we have a lot of kids move in, but we're not going to generate those dollars until next year. So, it would only be virtual kids. But those kids that move in could give us waitings. They could give us CTE minutes. They could give us vocational minutes. They could give us free lunch counts. So, it's kind of a double-edged sword, and where do you find that perfect balance? So, the state always says to best business practices to publish a little bit higher, but within reason so that you get full advantage of your local option budget as well because your local option budget is 33% of what your general fund legal max is. If you get that off too far, you might only get 32% if you don't deal with that correctly. So, we have to kind of find that balance to make sure that we get both sides of the formula and then navigate that so that we don't spend anything we don't actually get. That make sense? Okay. I'm going to go on to the next fun slide if we're done with this part. Does that all make sense? It kind of is what we've talked about. It's very similar to how it works, but we have to live within the formula. So, the next one is where we ended up with cash balances, which is a little bit challenging for us this year. And I knew it would be, and I shared that it would be. So, here's what we had to do. I had to move about $300,000 out of general fund into capital outlay just to make sure that I could preserve the deficit spending within something that we could manage out of contingency. So, those expenditures were moved, and all they did was help eliminate what, how much contingency we had to use. We have a couple of areas that are challenging. Some of these, they're just normal kind of changes. Capital outlay, we have a little bit of a lease and timing, but because we had to move some of those expenditures into capital outlay, you'll see that my balance is below my $4 million that we talk about when we talk about our capital improvement plan with you, which means we're going to have to be really careful about what we spend between July 1 and December 20 for cash flow purposes because I have no more new money coming into that fund, little bit of lease reimbursement, but beyond that, nothing until my tax distribution December 20. So, that's a little bit something, that's a watch spot. That's a hotspot we need to watch. The other one that's a little bit challenging because our state aid decreased in special education, we budgeted in 1819 with a state amount for categorical aid of $30,610. What happened was districts across the state actually hired more special education staff than what they were planning for because it's a set pool, and then, they divided all back out to districts. And so, depending upon the teachers across the state of Kansas for special education, that number changes. So, if it's fewer teachers than they predicted, you might get more money. But if it's more teachers than they predicted, they dropped the dollars. They dropped it down to $30,085, so $525 a teacher was part of what we lost in state aid in the current year. We had an audit adjustment of almost a half a million. That's not necessarily unusual, but compounded by a loss of state aid made it difficult. So, our special education balance decreased significantly, which is a little bit challenging. It starts getting into a cash flow concern. We may have to ask the state to advance us some state aid in a couple of months before December in order to make sure that we can make everything work. The other thing that's challenging with special education is it doesn't go away because they actually dropped it again for planning in 1920, which was not known to us when we've had some conversations. It is now down to 29.8. So, it has dropped again significantly. So, that is taking away any new revenues from special education. We're going to have to spend some time really looking at some cost containment and really, really wrapping our head around our special education during the current year so that we can make sure we don't drop it any further and don't have to then pull from something else as well. So, it's another hotspot that we're going to have to watch and make sure that we don't have something that turns into a pickle on us.
So, before we move on from that, the special education, and similar to what Jessica was saying, this question is probably pretty basic, but I just want to increase my understanding. So, the special education services that we provide are mandated. So, when you say, when you talk about cost containment, we, how would one contain costs that they are prescribed by the federal government and the state government to provide?
That's going to be some conversation. We'll have to see where we do or don't have flexibility in some of that. We may have to, that's that program evaluation of understanding how we use PARAs, understanding how we're doing our staff trainings and our professional.
I mean, we're routinely understaffed in PARAs and this year with special education teachers, so.
I don't have an answer other than I need to have a conversation with Kevin, and we're going to have to evaluate how we're spending, where we're spending, what that looks like in order to try to minimize that cash balance dropping.
Without impacting services. Can you expand on that a little bit?
We definitely can and will not violate any IEPs.
Right.
And so, if it's written, for example, if it's written in a student's IEP that he or she must have a one-on-one PAR, we have to provide that. I think where there are areas that we can really look at and just kind of see where our PARAs are located in terms of the number of students. So, making sure we are still within compliance from IDA standpoint, but just kind of evaluating the entire program to make sure that we are spending money where.
So, there are services that are, you can differentiate the, outside of the IEP, for example. There are services we provide that perhaps there are spaces we could be more efficient in how we deliver those services.
Right. Still making sure we're in compliance with IEP minutes and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah. There are services within the IEP, but there are also services that we do that are outside of that.
Right.
And so, we just need to determine what those are and evaluate those, just like we do with anything.
So.
The cost increased quite a bit more than what was anticipated in that thing as well. So, the question is, you know, what was the cause of that in order to, because it was a little more than what we planned.
Okay.
Need to find out what was extra that. And again, if it's something that we're going to have to continue to pull more money out of general fund for special education, then it takes away from other things that we're trying to do in those general fund dollars because this is not fully funded by that categorical aid. It's only that 14 million, and we're spending close to 30 million in this fund. So, the rest has to be federal grants, and then, it comes from the general operating dollars to fill the rest of the bucket. So, it's all shared dollars, and we all have, we have to see how we're best sharing those dollars.
So, to the extent possible, as you evaluate those potential efficiencies as a board and a community, just thinking through how important our special education services are, I would want to be relatively, not relative, I would want to be informed about those choices so that, I know, Dr. Lewis, I know that's your background. I know you're passionate about this area. I know Kevin is, I have all, yeah, I'm in complete faith in the district's ability to evaluate this program, but I would want to know about that in terms of concern for services.
And we would want to make sure that you did know that. We wouldn't do anything that you wouldn't.
Yeah.
And it'll be, it'll be part of what the Budget and Program Evaluation Committee will also have discussions on as Kevin shares with how their programs are run, how they As Kevin shares with how their programs are run, how they staff in buildings, why they do what they do, just all those kinds of things as we just learn.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's always important to evaluate how we do things and before you rehire things exactly the same way. Does, is that the efficient model or is there another model? And what do other districts do and other co-ops do and those kinds of things? So it's just a learning process.
Thank you, Kathy.
But it is a large amount of money that we spend as a whole. So it, it warrants being looked at like everything else. And then our contingency reserve, we've had to use almost a million eight to make everything else balance. So it's, some of the other balances that went down are just natural bond and interest, it's just a result of what's due. So some of this, this number is, although it's a big number, the ones that are most worrisome are the capital outlay dropping, special education. And then having to use what we anticipated we would use anyway was the contingency reserve, which is a little bit more than, I think I had said 1.5 to, to the 1.7 number and it's closer to. So those are the things that popped out at the end of the year that are challenging. The other one that is challenging that I need to point out is the fact that this special reserve has gone down significantly and it's continuing to go down. That's where our healthcare reserve dollars are and our work comp reserve dollars are. What's important to point out here is that of that balance that's sitting there, a million 95 of it has to stay there as work comp. Because we're self insured and our division of insurance at the state says that's the reserve you have to have in order to keep your permit. So we know we can't spend down below that in that fund for work comp. We also have to maintain at least the balance of 101, 160, because that's a balance for our flex plans. Which if people are turning in their medical reimbursement for their money reimbursement, we have to have the dollars there to be able to pay them back. So that's part we can't do anything with. The balance that's the health, the challenge with that is, is it's way below what we should have. If we were being fiscally, the way, best practice, we should have at least one full month's worth of premium in that balance. We have about 300 and some odd thousand and one month's premium for our medical, dental and vision is closer to 1.2 million. So cash flow wise, that becomes a challenge when the timing gets off or something, something happens. So we have pushed that, we're navigating it. But if we were to try to, we've got to at some point figure out how to get ourselves in a, in a right side up position in that particular fund. So that we can actually pay our premiums and not get behind for our employees. So that one's a challenge. So again, we've talked about this for the last five years. Cash balances, if we choose to use them for ongoing costs, we have to catch up. We knew the cliff was coming, we kind of bypassed a couple of opportunities to do more. And we're, we're having to navigate that. Just a reminder, you know, at one time we were high, we were probably in that 25% of our balances before block grant. We were down below the 10% mark on those ones, if you look at just those operating funds, the ones that we actually have flexibility in. I can't, I don't include bond and interest because obviously you can't do anything with that but pay your mortgage, those kinds of things. But of the dollars that are within that legal max, that's where we're sitting. As we move on then, to what that means for where we are with dollars. I didn't go back and re-present the staffing ratios, but the June 24th board meeting had the detail behind what we added and what we subtracted. Then we had some support staff restructure, again, trying to do as budget neutral. We've pulled these two out and we're going to absorb those in the administrative transfers as principals have been rehired and things have changed. We're going to be able to absorb those in there. It didn't change a lot of our net savings, but it did increase it from the 1,668 to 5,600. I have upped your deficit because you really do need to go up to that 1.8 as a million, as a minimum. We will probably have at least another 7.50 because of the decrease we continue to see in special education state aid. We have to replace the resources because, or you have to cut, it's one of those two options. And we really need to work towards getting a little bit more stable in our premiums and our healthcare to make sure we have a month's worth on hand. We have our premium renewal that we know about, adds, subtractions, the funding that we've spent to date, the new funding. And then this is where we, we would sit if we just did the minimum of the, the million eight there. Any questions at this point?
So can you talk about the deficit for a minimum, or a minute? So the, the additional 750 that's mentioned here? Are you making that recommendation on top of the recommendation we previously, we previously received? Yeah, right, that's a additional.
So we're really close to a million nine?
No, 750 is not in this million eight.
2.5.
Two, that's, yeah, it's additional 750.
Oh, gotcha.
So I have a million one left in contingency. The deficit, I, I fully anticipate your contingency will be down less than 500,000 at the end of next year, even just putting the million eight.
So that's, that's a significant difference then?
It's losses state aid, we're losing state aid in special education, you've got to replace that revenue. The other part of it is the uncomfortableness of cash flow in our healthcare reserve. I'm not saying you have to do that, but I don't have a month's worth of premium. So I would have to wait to pay healthcare premiums to Aetna until I got cash. So it's, it's not that you would have to do that part of it, but you're in special education for sure. We've got to replace that state aid we've lost.
So as somebody that serves on the.
So that is new, that's not something that, that we, we had, we didn't, didn't expect, that category of aid was.
You just found that out between the last meeting and this meeting, is what you're saying? Cause I mean, your estimates are really off, as it turns out.
Yeah, I mean, as somebody that serves on the negotiations committee, that's a, that's a, that's a giant number.
I mean, we're in trouble.
You're a million, you've been in trouble, this is not necessary.
Yeah, but can we talk about, I mean, just right, right now, that, I mean, we are, certainly we've been in trouble. In the short term, we are newly in trouble.
The million eight is within what I shared with you. The 750 is if we can't do something during 1920. I'm anticipating we either, we have to, we have to squeeze that down. My preference is to have something more than 300,000 in your healthcare reserve. Which is why I say that 750 is there because we have to deal with state aid. We might not have it next year, I can't, that I can't predict. I also can't predict when people overspend in utilities. We haven't added dollars to utilities. When utilities go up, that's not something we've planned for.
And I have a question.
I have no contingency left. So part of your, my challenge is that I'm putting that out there because you've got to now start thinking about the next step. We're dealing with what's in front of us, but we have to start thinking about the next step. We can't continue to just take and take and take because there is not going to be any. So it's not that that 750 is an estimate that we still, a guaranteed estimate. That's what we need to start thinking about as we need to plan going forward.
And to be clear, that number is new since our last, our last report.
It's always been there, it's just, you've got to start thinking about that going forward.
But why didn't you tell us at our last report? I mean, that throws such a wrench in this entire process.
Ignore that, I probably shouldn't have even put the memo there. I've always said you need to deal with a million five to a million seven-ish, it's around a million eight. The new that I've put over here, those are just dealing with where we need to get back to. You could probably continue just where we are, but you're not going to have, you're going to be stuck at just continued nothing for cash reserves. So all that is, is trying to start building back something in order to not have this paycheck to paycheck, which is where we are. We knew we were always there, that's always been what I've shared with you. Is that we're getting to that paycheck to paycheck moment in contingency reserve. It's always been what I've shared for the last five years. So that is my note there to say, we've got to start thinking about that going forward.
Let me ask a question about, you mentioned utilities and I'm glad you reminded me about this. So the city of Lawrence is planning to increase water rates. At least it's my understanding for residential users by on the order of 8%. Does that also apply to the school district?
We haven't heard anything about rate increases yet, but it could. And I, we have not received notification that utilities are going up yet for water.
Their budget, I mean, their budget that they've been talking about, that they just did their first approval on, had that utility. But I guess the question I'm asking is, does anybody know if that was just for residential users or do, does it apply to all users? We don't know.
I don't know.
Find out.
I don't know.
Okay. So that would be, that would be, so if we experience, if we experience an 8% increase in our water bills over this next year because of the city's actions. That comes, that has to come out of contingency at this point, which we only have.
We just have the 1.1 left at the end of this year. Trying to maintain that, but when those kinds of things happen that we may not know about or.
Or when Westar brings their, or it's not Westar anymore, I forget what they're.
Or we have a growth of kids next fall and you need to hire teachers beyond. And those are conversations we've had. Once you start getting that contingency down to this million dollar mark, those are forward conversations that we have to have. Which is why we're doing the program evaluation, which is why we're trying to figure out how we can create efficiencies in order to not have the contingency reserve decrease further. And to allow us to come up with efficiencies that we can generate new dollars going forward. I'm just presenting it in a different way, this has been the same message. It's just trying to be clear because I don't know that anybody felt how scary this was to me.
I think I felt, I have felt how scary this is, but I, I think the thing that I find, new information for me is this increasing decrease in our special ed funding. And I, and that's, that's something that's completely out of our hands. Because it, it's based on the fact that the state legislature appropriates a set amount and then backs into how much everybody gets per teacher. Because they've said this is how much they're funding. And then if there's more staff than there was the year before, you just get less per FTE. And that, you know, that, that's a really frustrating piece because as Kelly rightly noted, we are mandated to provide services. It's not like we have any choice. And we are only getting somewhere on the order of 14% of excess cost in our federal funding. The state funding is nowhere near the, what is it supposed to be, 90%? But we're only really at a lot less than 90%, I can't remember the number off the top of my head. And that is really driving that 1.8 number right now.
It drove the current years from 1.5 to the 1.8 was primarily because of that loss of state aid that happened mid-year to us this year. Hoping that somebody underspends somewhere and, and that's what that is. My anticipation though is if it continues in this vein, we have to make it up because it's continued resource that just goes away. So I have to put it out there in front of you to say, if it continues to drop, we're going to have to come up with a, a different resource or we're going to have to reduce expenditures. It may go back up, but right now that pot of money, normally every year it goes up. We, this is the first time that it's gone further down on us.
So I guess, I'm going to just say this out loud because it's on my mind and I know it's on people's minds that are watching. In my sort of small group, one of the LEA members asked, I thought a pretty poignant question. And he said, you know, can you explain to me why when you knew a million five was coming? Why you guys didn't sort of direct staff to look for cuts to even take a portion of that hit off of this new funding? And I did not have an answer for that. And I don't feel great about that. And I, I'm not, this is not directed towards you, it's really more directed towards Dr. Lewis and the entire staff. And this notion that we as a board didn't say, you know what, we know we're going to have to pay 101.5 in deficit next year. We should really think about places where we could start absorbing some of that within the budget that we currently have.
So, so we have had some of those conversations. We also had new money and the same thing is don't spend the new money, absorb it in lieu of a cut. So it's that balance of cut, those cuts versus.
I understand that, but now, that's where we're at now. And you know, when I got involved in the school district back in 2008, 2009, this is where we were too. And we did a big exercise of going through the budget and really looking at places we could cut and get some significant amounts of money back into the general fund. For things like salaries or reducing class sizes, those priorities that we had kind of collectively as a district decided were important. And so I would just say like, I'm at a place right now, I'm, I can't go back to negotiations and tell them that this number just grew to 2. some odd million dollars.
The dollars went from the 1.7 to the 1.4, which was the original amount that we thought you would have for.
The 1.8 and, but with a 750 plus.
New resources are down, are at 1.4, which is originally back in March, that was what we thought your new resources would be after doing this. So we're in the same ballpark we were in April for what you have as new funding. Part of the deficit catching up with us is the year we did have windfall of $8 million. We chose to put all of that back into salaries at that time and we chose not to do as much into deficit. That should have been different and we wouldn't be sitting here. We made a lot of cuts in 2008, 9, we've not added those back.
We've added some of them back.
Some, but not, not to the kind of degree that there is those same kinds of things available to cut again.
I still think it's an exercise we need to.
And that's what we're doing, and that's what we're doing through the program evaluations. And that's what we're, that's that whole reason that that's been put into place back in January is this is coming, we have to deal with this. We've got to look at our budget differently, that program evaluation has to occur. We have to have a system in which we're looking at that. And that was my push at that time because we have to do that or we're not going to, we can't just continue and not relook at how we're doing.
I think in, the messaging too is a little bit, a little off in that the, the work that Jessica's pointing to in terms of looking for efficiencies or finding where we could make cuts. Doesn't translate to we shouldn't have invested in teachers', teachers' compensation. So it's, and I think that messaging is, that, that's challenging for me to hear as a board member. I can't imagine what that's like to hear for a teacher. So I think we have to talk about how we're going to be fiscally responsible so that we can pay teachers as opposed to we should not have paid or invested in compensation. Which is a little bit different messaging and I just want us to be careful about that as a board as we look at.
That big boondoggle that we talk about did not propel our teachers above all of the surrounding districts, so it still isn't.
Come out that way, I'm not saying we shouldn't have invested, but based on the circumstances that we were in knowing where the case was.
I think it's more.
Where other things in front of us as well.
And how we talk about, how, where we look at, how we utilize that program evaluation, which you've highlighted. And I think is incredibly important to see where are there places where we could be doing less, places where we might be wanting to do more? And where are there savings within those, that evaluation process? So I'm really glad that we have that and I appreciate that you're leading that.
I, I just want to say though, in this whole conversation, the reason that this is so hard is that 85% of our budget goes to salaries. So when we're talking about program evaluations and cuts, we're, we're actually talking about getting rid of positions.
Yes, that's right.
And that's, and that's.
I mean, there are places where we might not be, I mean, not, I'm sorry.
Also have, we also have budget for positions that have been left unfilled.
Right, and so, but I, I say that because I, I just, I, I want to, I want to kind of temper the, you know, we have been in so much financial uncertainty. Particularly over the last five years. I have felt like one of the reasons we've been reluctant to take an axe to the budget. Has been that uncertainty of, you know, do you want to get rid of good people? And then turn around the next year and go, oh, well, as it turns out, the legislature changed their mind and we have this money. And so my perspective on it is we've been trying to get through this period until we knew what was going to happen. And unfortunately, now we know what's going to happen and it's not exactly the greatest outcome. But we're going to have to figure out how to, how to manage that. And it's, and it's not, and it's not an easy conversation to have. And I, and I recognize how difficult your conversations have been and will be in negotiations. But I, I just, I think making, making sure that the public hears that message that when we're talking about cuts, it's, it's, we don't have, we can't cut more paper. Then we're not, that this ordinance, this ordinance of money or this level of, of spending that we're talking about. We are not going to cut our way out of by making cuts to supply budgets, et cetera. It's, it's, it's more than that. And people just need to be prepared for those conversations as we have them.
And one of the things that we heard loud and clear in the community is community values teacher salary, which we, which we all do in, in class size. And in order for us to really address that with the way our current budget is set up. And in the past, we've, we've trimmed some fat, we've trimmed some fat, we're trying not to trim or cut arteries at the, at the school level. But we're at a pivotal point in a, a period where. arteries at the, at the school level. But we're at a pivotal point in a, a period where tough decisions, you know, as Shannon indicated, the bulk of our budget is, is in salary. And so we're talking about program evaluation and looking to see how we can be more efficient with our personnel, but we're still operating, and I'm just going to be, we're still operating some small buildings. And so when we think about where we are and where we want to go, and what the community said as priorities, we have to make some, some tough decisions, because we value our teachers and we want to put money there, but we can't continue to do it operating, you know, as, I mean, it's just like a family. We have to make a decision. Sometimes we need to downsize our house to, to really get what we, we really know we need as a, as a family.
And one of the, one of the things I read recently, which I think really resonates in this situation, is that we've all been kind of in this waiting game to find out where we were going to end up after the court case ended. But this is the new normal. So unfortunately, the new normal only still puts us at inflation-adjusted 2009 levels of funding. So we've, we've had a 10-year fight to basically end up where we should have been in 2009. And that presents all kinds of challenges when you're not operating your school district in 2009, you're operating it in 2019, and there's a whole host of additional needs and expectations around what you are going to be doing with those funds.
As we go through, your levied funds are what's next. Adult basic education is a levied fund. You have your mill levy that's tied to that. The capital outlay is your mill levied fund at 8 mil, and that's tied to that. Special assessments, we don't have much left. There's no mill levy tied to that. We just have the fund, and it will pay for assessments. Bond and interest, it's starting to go back down as our valuation goes up. And so that's an important, so that's something that's, that we're seeing in that fund. We didn't increase it the way we needed to, or thought we would need to for the bond and interest. And then it's now, as valuation is going up, it's changed. Our local option budget, what this is just representing is that the mill levy is a result of the formula. Basically, you start out with what your legal max is, you fill it with state aid, and then they, they look at the taxes required to finish filling it, and any cash balance that's getting there. And it will yo-yo based on what the state does to us a lot of times. Currently, it's going down. Our state aid has gone up. And so although it's going up, the state aid has gone up. Taxes don't need to be as much. It always pulls in the cash balance on the budget. And so that's what our projected mill levy is going to be for this fund next year. Assess valuation is going up a little bit. The thing that we have to be cautious with for this is, I think, we've mentioned a couple of times over the last year or more, the dark store theory. So I received this time from the county, the first time that we actually have multiple appeals pending. Fox Run, Walmart, Target, Menards, and they are looking to decrease their appraised value that they're being taxed on, and believe that they should only be taxed on it as if they have no customers and it's just an empty building. As a result, those appeals have been successful in other counties. It was a recent article in July in Overland Park that Walmart won an appeal reducing their value by $60 million. So the appeals have not been realized yet in Lawrence, but if they will be, it will lose about $18 million of our assessed valuation. That won't impact our 20 mils at the state that they're required to fund, whatever the tax collections is. It potentially would have an impact, the 33 mils that remain. That totals about $617,000 in taxes split across those various funds. As a result, we have tried to adjust in this, taking out that potential appeal and upping delinquency a little bit in order to anticipate not getting those taxes, but yet having enough taxes to be able to pay up to the legal max. As a result, this assessed valuation is slightly less than, than what we would normally use in order to address the appeal. When you look at the mill levy, it is still going down, about .784 over last year. And then the graph is just something that shares a graphic look at that.
So Kathy, can I go back to the, this dark store theory question again? Because obviously, this is something we've talked about a couple of times, because we've seen it out there. So what you just said, to make sure I understand, is that in calculating our mill levy for next year, you have adjusted the assessed valuation calculation to account for the potential that those appeals would be granted, so that if they were granted, we would not have a mid-year cut?
We would have the resources to be able to fund our legal max.
Okay.
In LOB. That's the one I'm primarily worried about.
Okay. So then, what that means for taxpayers in our community is that the following year, their mill levy would likely go up to fill in the hole.
Um, we're trying to keep it, I'm trying to keep it as flat as I can as a result of that unknown. So I, because the yo-yo is what we're trying to avoid.
Right.
But it is possible, because if the appeal, it depends on the timing of the appeal.
Right. But say, let's say they all get granted in the same year, and so our commercial valuation goes down by $18 million. We still, we still get what we get from the LOB calculation. So what happens? That means the mill levy goes up on homeowners.
It will, because it has to, the, the cap is the cap. State, it's just what I explained in the local option budget. So you fill your state, the rest is taxes, and potentially whatever that is, is what, but because it could happen in the middle of the year on us, we have to anticipate that. And so the state just said that, or the county said that these dollar, these appeals are not accounted for in our budget estimate for assessed valuation. So they gave it to us in order for us to adjust if we needed to, or felt the need to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So yes, that could potentially be. When you look at the Code 99 and you look at the back page, you have to look at the numberless transfers. And because we publish high, there's a bigger difference than obviously what we have dollars that we're, we're planning on actually realizing. So as a result of that, you can see where the highlighted changes are, that were the big amounts, the capital outlay, special education, the virtual that we know we won't get, the CAPERS that is gifts and grants, because we published that high, not knowing what the donations might be. And then just everything else to get to that, where that difference is on that Code 99 form. So the last two pages are announcing the hearing for the 12th. It is what those caps are throughout the budget, the maximum mill levies, and that's, those are those maximums you're approving. So those would be your next dates that would fall. That would be the motion if we're going to live with those maximums.
I just want to make a comment. I, I'm awfully glad that our reporter has previous experience covering Manhattan School District, because I'm sure you understand this, but in years past, we've had some, some misunderstanding in talking about this, this part of our budgeting process with the public. I think sometimes people look at these documents and think that those maximums are what we actually plan to spend. And, and you've said it a number of times, and I just want to reiterate, that it is absolutely not what we even think we are going to bring into our bank account to be able to spend, but it's simply the way that the state asks us to do our budget, so that we can take advantage of any monies that we do collect. So comparing this budget to last year's actual spending, and then talking about the difference is...
Those differences exist if you look at the same report.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's apples to, I know.
Is this grapefruit?
Grape, not even, it's not even a fruit. It's like, it's like apples to green peppers or something like that, trying to compare those things, so.
And then I just want to add, Kathy, that I know you're frequently bringing us what we all think is bad news, and I appreciate the way that you deliver the message, and I hear 100% that you've been talking about this loud and clear for a long time.
Yes.
For what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you.
For reestablishing that evaluation committee that's so needed.
I'll make the motion if, unless there's other, I don't want to make it if other people have comments or questions. Okay. I move the Board of Education to approve for publication the 2019-2020 budget maximums and mill levies, as noted on state budget form Code 99, with a budget hearing scheduled for August 12, 2019 at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Ingram?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Johnson?
Jones?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Venture?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you again, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy. So at this time, we're going to recess to executive session. So I move the Board of Education recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed with Dr. Anthony Lewis, David Cunningham invited to be present, with the board to return to open session in this room at 8:56. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, do I just make the next one a change?
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold her in here, or what?
Everyone's here?
Okay.
Okay.
Quality.
Oh, I will make another motion for second executive session. I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract with this, to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception of employer-employee negotiations under coma with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Jerry Kimball, Dr. David Cunningham, Kathy Johnson invited to be present, with the board to return to open session in this room at, um, I'm going to do math.
I think 9:12.
9:12?
9:15.
9:15. Let's go for it. 9:15. All those in favor?
Aye.